My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of August 6th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Supo channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Tonight's meeting, as you can see, we are live and in person back at Town Hall. However, the public participation portion is unable to be held in Town Hall due to COVID restrictions. So anyone who wants to join and talk to us through the phone, the telephone connection, is more than able to do that. You can reach the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us and let us know and we'll be happy to add you to the agenda. Before I proceed, I would like to thank Executive Director for Shrewsbury Media Connection, Mark Serra, and IT Director Brian LaRue, who have been instrumental in helping us since we had this COVID pandemic with all of our technology issues. So thank you very much to those gentlemen. We do have two individuals tonight who would like to speak to us. I know we have Dr. Megan Brought. I'm going to ask if Megan can be unmuted and she can speak to the committee. Megan, can you hear us?
I can state, yes.
Okay, thank you. If you could just state your name and address for the record and go ahead and address the committee.
Sure. My name is Dr. Megan Brought. I live on 4 Ashmont Street in Truitt, Maryland. So good evening. I am Dr. Megan Brought. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist. I'm a mother of two kids in Truitt, one of which is an incoming third grader who will be attending floral school in the fall. So I'm really grateful to be speaking with you and have the opportunity to share some of my thoughts and ideas from both a psychologist's perspective and as a mother. As I'm sure most folks agree, we're living in really uncertain times and with a lot of uncertain outcomes in almost every area of living. And these constantly changing times come with unprecedented problems. Getting our kids safely to school is one of those problems. In the last six months, I know our school district has been working to find solutions that will get kids to learn and keep them safe. And as we learn more, our school district solutions are likely continuing to evolve. And this will especially be so if we experience more illness this fall and winter. The fact is COVID-19 is not really under good control from a national perspective, and the impact of COVID-19 on our school year is not predictable to anyone. And as I'm saying these words, I notice my own blood pressure kind of rise and my own heart rate increase. And both of these are hallmark signs of anxiety. But we know that a little anxiety can be a good thing. It can help motivate and drive us, but a lot of anxiety can be quite paralyzing. It can stop us in our tracks or it can lead us to retreat entirely. And that goes for adults and children. And when we think about the definition of anxiety in a clinical sense, I'm thinking about it in terms of a fear, of future uncertainty, coupled with a belief that we don't have the resources to cope with whatever that uncertain future holds for us. So in other words, something really bad might happen, and when it does, we won't be able to deal with it. And this definition of anxiety is really important as we think about our children and as we prepare our kids for our upcoming school year. Based on that, I suggest that number one, we have a responsibility to prepare and equip our children for future situations so that if and when something occurs, it isn't traumatic. And number two, we are obligated to foster a sense of intrinsic mastery in our kids so that our children believe in their hearts that they can handle the situation if and when it occurs. We want our kids to know that they have stable ways of staying connected emotionally to their classmates and their teachers, even if they are forced to learn remotely the whole year. They need to know that they are not alone. And there are a lot of ways we can create these kinds of opportunities for our children. One way might be to create lunch bunch groups within each class, starting right at the beginning of the school year. And schedule these lunch groups through Zoom each week so that children can see their friends without the barrier of a mask and just socialize. Talk about their day, discuss how they're feeling, brainstorm ideas. So much emotional learning and growth happens on the playground and at the lunch table, and we can't let that type of growth and learning be less important than teaching our kids math or reading. Another idea might be to have scheduled monthly meetings with the school guidance counselor just to talk about feelings and experiences with an expert. These would be guided discussions with themes to help kids talk about how all these school changes are impacting them. There is real power in validation from trusted adults. Assessing and supporting our kids' mental health before an issue arises is essential. And finally, I really highly recommend that each class create some kind of parent focus group over Zoom that meet on some kind of regular basis to allow safe spaces for parents who are just trying to do the best they can, to allow time for sharing of ideas, sharing of thoughts, and validation of experiences. This kind of coming together, that's what's going to keep our community connected. Parents and kids will see the phrase "we are all in this together" and actually truly believe it. That type of certainty is what makes an unpredictable school year so much more manageable. So to summarize, it is our responsibility to attend to the mental health of our children, especially during these uncertain times. Children sense so much more than we adults realize. They are watching us. They are seeing if the people in charge seem prepared. They are taking their emotional cues from us. So let's help our kids see that we are in fact ready to support them and guide them, even when things seem to change a lot. Putting proactive and predictable avenues of support from their peers and from school experts may help our kids see that they do have the resources they need to cope whatever unpredictable thing might happen in our future this school year. So thank you for considering my thoughts and ideas. And with that, I will pause.
Thank you very much, Megan. We appreciate your comments and addressing the committee this evening. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Chalmers. We do. Okay, great.
It is our responsibility to attend to the mental health of our children, especially during these uncertain times. Children sense so much more than we adults realize. They are watching us. They are seeing if the people in charge seem prepared.
So if somebody on the phone is listening to the meeting, we're getting your audio over the phone.
How much support and guidance?
Mr. Chalmers, that might be you.
Gary, can you hear us now?
Hello?
Gary, can you hear us now?
I can, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next to address the committee is Mr. Gary Chalmers. He is the Shrewsbury Education Association President. Welcome, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Some of you know, my name is Gary Chalmers. I'm the president of the Shrewsbury Education Association. I'm here tonight on behalf of close to 500 members of the Shrewsbury Teachers Union. The educators in Shrewsbury want nothing more than to be back in our schools, classrooms, and offices doing what we love most, educating the students of Shrewsbury. We genuinely miss our classrooms, yet what we truly miss is the joy teaching and interacting with our students brings us every day. This past spring, the educators in our town, state, and nation had the rough pulled out from under us with the COVID-19 global pandemic turned our educational foundation upside down. Yet the dedicated educators of Shrewsbury adapted and adjusted their practices, worked with their colleagues, administration, technology supports, and families, and we're up and running, innovating our practices, doing our best to educate and meet the needs of our students and families of this town. Albeit not perfect, I'll say that we did a remarkable job. It is now August, and we are still in the midst of this global pandemic. Turn on the evening news, and often the pandemic is the first news report you see and hear. Yet as schools approach opening, these new reports have moved towards the how will schools open? Are they safe enough? What happens when they aren't? Who decides this? And this is why I'm here tonight. As the FCA leader, I'm here to share with the school committee, the leadership team, the students, families, and the educators of Shrewsbury that our number one priority is the safety of everyone, adults and children, entering any and every Shrewsbury public school building. In meeting regularly with the administration and school committee, the FCA Executive Board and representatives, it is clear that everyone shares this as their top priority. I'm here tonight to state publicly that we, the FCA, need to continue to be part of the conversation and have an active voice in the decision-making of setting the threshold for the agreed-upon safety measures. I'm here to make sure that our voice is part of developing and agreeing upon the ways for students and staff to safely return to school, the use of PPE, air ventilation and HVAC systems, the use of plexiglass dividers, tents, hand sanitizers, daily protocols for cleaning, and extensive deep cleaning, division of students into groups of cohorts, enforcement of wearing masks, outdoor teaching, social distancing, and so much more. As much as we need to be part of agreeing upon the protocols for opening, we need to be part of developing and agreeing upon the metrics used for closing or moving to remote nursing, whether it is due to the spread of the virus or the possibility of extreme heat or cold. Some of our classrooms can reach 85 degrees or greater on given days, and being in those rooms for six-plus hours a day, wearing a mask is not healthy for students or staff and truly is not educationally sound. If health and safety is everyone's top priority, then these guidelines need to be established with and agreed upon with the FCA prior to staff and students entering the buildings. In order to ensure a safe return for everyone, whenever that may be, we need to ensure that all nine public school buildings meet the measures we have jointly developed and agreed upon in order to safely return to the buildings to continue the jobs we have dedicated our lives to, educating, nurturing, mentoring the minds and hearts of the future, the students of Shrewsbury. Tonight, we are voting on a model for which the district's students and staff will be returning, whether it be a hybrid model or remote model. Depending on your decision, staff could possibly be returning to these buildings in approximately 25 days. This is scary to us. Although we have held many discussions with the administration and school committee, these discussions are focused more on the scheduling of how students will receive or how staff will deliver academic instruction. If safety of all is everyone's priority, it is imperative that we begin our discussion and come to an agreement about what a safe building actually is. It is important that every building, including Beal, meets these requirements. Without this agreement, it is hard to endorse anyone returning into these buildings. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and we, the FCA leadership, look forward to developing agreed-upon protocols, metrics, and measures to ensure the safety of the staff and students in the district so we can do what we do best, educate the students in our district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. I really appreciate you addressing the committee this evening, and I also want to publicly thank you as well as the rest of the FCA executive leadership team for really working with us. For people watching at home or listening, we've been meeting with the FCA leadership for months now and having a lot of good collaborative discussions, and I think that is going to be very important as we move forward with the school reopening. So thank you again to Gary and the rest of the team.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Thank you, Gary. Next on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening? I'm seeing nothing. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I also want to thank Dr. Braun and Mr. Chalmers for stating their, making their statements and appreciate their focus on the health and well-being of our students and our staff and everyone associated with our school community. And we'll, of course, talk about that in great, much more detail when we present the reopening plan to you this evening. I would like to mention tonight during Superintendent's Report that we've had a resignation of a member of our central office team that many people are familiar with, Mr. Steve Rocco, has served for a number of years as our Coordinator of Transportation and Safety. Mr. Rocco has decided to resign to pursue some other needs for him and his family, and I just wanted to thank him. His job is an critically important job for our district relative to certainly the volume and the intricacies of busing thousands of students every day and working with our vendor A transportation, working with parents. That's an important role that he played, but in particular, especially with his law enforcement background, I think we really advanced the safety of our schools a great deal during his time working with us. He was an excellent liaison to the Shrewsbury Police Department and Shrewsbury Fire Department. He worked with our school administrative teams, putting together tabletop exercises multiple times a year to go through potential situations that we might have to deal with, and that is work that has made us safer as a school district. So I just want to publicly thank Mr. Rocco. We will miss him, wish him the very best, and thank him for his service. And that's Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first timed scheduled appointment this evening is Project 351 Service Project. Rising Shrewsbury High School senior Preston Karp was selected as the Shrewsbury Ambassador for Project 351 in 2017, and he has worked since that, since then, on multiple community service projects, including a 9/11 tribute service. Last year, Preston worked with the SHS community to launch a first-year pilot for this service campaign that included staff and students traveling to serve at the Be Like Brick Foundation, Grafton Community Harvest Project, and St. Anne's. Unable to safely travel to service sites this year, they plan to launch a first-year online component, National Day of Service Online Donation Database. Tonight, Preston and Project 351 founder and Executive Director Carolyn Casey will talk about the new initiative. Welcome, Preston and Carolyn. Can you hear us through the phone?
Hi, everyone. Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great. So this is Preston Karp. I am a rising senior at Shrewsbury High School. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. And just to introduce everyone who's on the phone, Ms. Carolyn Casey is the founding executive director of Project 351, as you mentioned. And Project 351 is a Massachusetts youth service organization with an ambassador from each of the 351 cities and towns among the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I was honored to be selected as the Shrewsbury Ambassador in 2017 and to then have continued to serve as a member of the Regional Unity Corps, which is an alumni leadership board with Project 351. And it's truly a lifetime commitment to this organization. It's so incredible. And that was a very high-level overview. Carolyn, is there anything you'd like to add about Project 351?
Well, I guess first, I wanted just to say good evening and thank you for having me. My role primarily is to be here in solidarity with Preston and also this year's ambassador, Emma Keely, who isn't with us, but I just want to make sure I recognize her. And I'm here to answer any questions, if anybody had any. And I also want to make sure I just say hello because one of my family members is on the school committee. So hi, Lindsay.
Hello, Carol.
Say hi to Lindsay. Hi, Lindsay. But I'm turning it over to Preston, but I am here to answer any questions. And really grateful to the school committee and to Dr. Sawyer and to all the educators. One, for the support that you provide, Preston and Emma, in Project 351. But right now, your leadership, I consider educators heroes, and I think the leadership that you're providing over the last, I guess, five or six months has been at next level. So I just want to appreciate, on behalf of Project 351, our gratitude to all of you. And I will turn it back to Preston.
Great. Thank you so much. So yeah, tonight, we're here to talk about 9/11 tribute service. So as you mentioned, last year, we did launch a pilot project at Shrewsbury High School where around 30 students and 10 faculty members traveled to serve at the Be Like Brick Foundation, the Grafton Community Harvest Project, and St. Anne's. And the idea of this is that putting goodness into the world by serving the community will help to combat the tragedy of events that occurred on 9/11/01. This year, due to the global pandemic, we're unable to serve on-site, and we are launching our online donation database and encouraging $9.11 donations in support of Massachusetts Military Heroes Fund, or MMHS. So last year, we actually wanted to try and incorporate this idea, but logistics got in the way and we weren't able to. So it's great that we're able to launch it this year. So the Massachusetts Military Heroes Fund is a private nonprofit organization that is dedicated to providing support to the families of military personnel with ties to Massachusetts who have died as a result of active duty service post 9/11/2001, as is listed on their website. And Carolyn has worked with MMHS for many years, so is there anything you'd like to share about the organization, Carolyn?
So I just wanted to convey the gratitude of Diane Neillan, who is the Executive Director of MMHS. And their mission is, as Preston mentioned, is support for the bereaved families of the fallen. And that support includes anything from emotional and mental health care, emergency funds for living expenses, food, heat, and advocacy on behalf of those families. And so the National Military Heroes Fund is a very small nonprofit, and they have two staffs, and they serve over 300 families across the state. And we are, Project 351 is very proud, this is our 10th year of 9/11 tribute service, and we've been partnering with the National Military Heroes Fund over the last 10 years and can speak to the quality of their leadership in their program. They are a very compassionate, empathetic, and high-impact organization. But Diane Neillan reached out to me because she knew Preston was speaking to you tonight, and she just wanted me to convey her gratitude for your consideration.
Yes, thank you. So yeah, it's going to be an online donation database, so there will be one link, and there will be some sort of like donate button, and we're encouraging the $9.11 donations. So yeah, we just wanted to update all of the committee members. I did present to the school committee about Project 351 in 2017, and everyone is always so supportive and receptive, and we are so extremely grateful for that support. So we always want to, you know, keep you updated about Project 351. And this year, we are making this a community-wide and central mass endeavor. So yeah, that's an overview. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Preston and Carolyn. Oh, go ahead, Carolyn.
No, I just wanted to just say one quick thing. So for 9/11, it will be, so our young people are serving all across the state, and this is one of the options that they have for their participation, but there's a myriad of projects that they can do on 9/11. And I just was very moved by the mom who kicked off the public testimony talking about the need for community and connection. And Project 351, we went to a remote learning and service model back in March, and we just feel very fortunate that we have young people like Preston and Emma, who despite the challenges of, you know, we're not able to gather and we're not able to build community in the traditional model that we always have, but we have found the opportunity for us to be a source of constant connection, purpose, and compassion for our ambassadors and our alumni has been something that has been both critically needed and transformative for them. And so I just wanted to sort of underscore her remarks around community and connection, and that's what we witnessed. Even though we're doing it virtually, it still is very powerful for our young people who are mobilizing, you know, virtually still able to give back. And as one quick example, we had a Hope and Gratitude Walk, and they mobilized 1,000 people and raised over $17,000 for Be Like Brick, the Wonder Fund, and No Kid Hungry. And just, that's just one example of how extraordinary and people like Preston are, which I know you all know because you're educators and school committee members. But I just want to say how much I appreciate you allowing us to continue to do our mission in a virtual way. And thank you, Preston, for inviting me.
Thank you, Preston and Carolyn. And I think it's so important that you're continuing what's a hallmark in Shrewsbury community service, especially with our students, doing it virtually, because I think we're going to be doing a lot of things virtually. So I think it's just exciting to see that this mission is continuing, and I hope it spins off to other students going down this kind of same path. Any comments or questions from the committee? Lindsay?
So obviously, as people have learned, Carolyn and I are sister-in-laws, and I wasn't particularly more excited when I first saw Preston's email, but it's important to know that a year ago, shortly after I joined the school committee, when I first learned about the Day of Service that had happened at the high school, I reached Dr. Principal with a low, because some of you may not know, my sister, our sister-in-law, passed away on 9/11. And so Preston and I are beyond impressed with your leadership and keeping this issue at the forefront. And that Project 361 has consistently, in 351 communities, said that we need to remember 9/11 in ways of service to the rest of our community, is deeply impactful to me and something that I both want to support personally. But certainly as a school committee member, I have learned from Dr. Sawyer about your leadership abilities in many other parts of our school system, and I'm impressed, but want to personally thank you and know that if there's anything that I can do to be supportive of you and your efforts, both as an ambassador and then now as an alumni for Project 351, you have my complete support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Anyone else?
And I want to extend back to Lindsay, to you and to your committee members. First of all, Dr. Sawyer is always so incredibly kind when we see him and supportive, so I just want to appreciate him. But if we can be of support in any way to, if anybody ever wants to talk to us about either their practices or the way in which we are, we've shifted our model to remote learning and remote community building, I would be very happy to talk to anybody at any time. Very passionate about service and unity, and so just consider me a friend and at your service, you know, now or when we get back to the traditional model of community building.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good. Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
I first want to thank Preston. I think it's incredibly impressive that he's demonstrating his leadership once again, and we're very fortunate that we'll be able to shift the model of the Day of Service to an online type of approach, and it's for an extremely worthy cause, to help veterans and their families, and we just appreciate that very much. I also want to thank Carolyn Casey. Project 351 is really a remarkable organization, and it's one that really continues to grow in its influence because of their model where their alumni, you know, one for those who don't know, one eighth grader from each of the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts is selected each year to be a servicing ambassador, but then they keep them engaged, as Preston is, entering his senior year of high school, in an ongoing way. And I think it's become a very influential force across the Commonwealth. I also just want to mention that Emma Keely, who is this year's Project 351 ambassador, who just completed her eighth grade year at Oak Middle School, will be a ninth grader in the coming year. Traditionally, we have the ambassador come to the school committee in the springtime, and because of the epidemic, we weren't able to do that this past spring, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to bring Emma to the school committee sometime in the fall to describe the service leadership she provided last year. And I'm sure as an alum herself, she'll continue this community service work. It does, I think it transforms the students, not only who get to be ambassadors, but also it has an impact on literally thousands upon thousands of lives across the Commonwealth. So thank you to Ms. Casey. Thank you to Preston, and we're very, very pleased to partner with Project 351.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. And thank you again for joining us, Preston and Carolyn.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good night. Okay. Our next timed scheduled appointment is the Recommendation Plan for Reopening School for the 2020-2021 school year. Per mandate by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, school districts in the Commonwealth had to perform an analysis and submit a plan for three types of scenarios for fall reopening of schools: in-person, a hybrid of in-person and remote learning, and a fully remote learning option by July 31, 2020. At our meeting on July 29, Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Clowder presented an analysis of the different reopening options and noted the district's preferred option of a hybrid in-person and remote learning model on alternating schedule. Tonight, Dr. Sawyer and members of the leadership team will provide more detailed information on what the hybrid program will entail, and Dr. Sawyer will request that the committee vote to approve his recommended school reopening plan and authorize the submission of the plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fritz. And as those watching and may have just tuned in can see, we are here meeting in person for the first time since the pandemic, which is terrific to see people in person. But obviously, things are different. Things have changed, and we're all wearing masks. I would imagine the viewing audience probably thinks that's an improvement when it comes to the superintendent, because it may be a little bit easier to watch, but hopefully people at least listen as well. The incredible leadership team we have here is going to help me present this reopening plan to you this evening. I do want to let you know that the plan has been posted on our website on the homepage under the news items right on the main page, if people want to read along as we go or check it out, because there are lots and lots of details in that plan. We're going to give an overview tonight, which I'm sure will be a fairly lengthy presentation, even giving somewhat of a high-level overview, just given the volume of the contents of the plan, but we will try to hit the most important points. And the details, of course, are available in the document. I think it's also important to say that we know that this is going to continue to evolve. We know that not every detail has been hit yet. We know that this plan, like any other plan, is imperfect, and our job is to continue to use it, review it, adapt it, and be flexible as we respond to different circumstances over the coming weeks and months and year. I want to begin with my first slide is to emphasize again, and people who've been watching our meetings know, these are the key messages that we have been giving each time we talk about planning for reopening in this coming school year. First, that the health and well-being of our students, our families, and staff certainly is our first priority. Certainly, as our teacher Gary Chalmers, who's the president of the Shrewsbury Education Association, echoed this, I think this is an absolute shared value across our entire community. Our focus for the coming year is to develop safe school environments, of course, for our students, our staff. A priority- It prioritizes everyone's well-being and enables high levels of learning for all. And I think that's very purposeful, that well-being comes before learning. And I think our first public participant this evening, Dr. Braun, was very eloquent in what she stated about the importance of what we're going to provide to our students, especially as we model for them as adults, in terms of what we provide for them and the kind of environment we provide, whether that's in a remote environment or in person. Things are going to be different for some time. And that will be certainly part of our lasting legacy as the adults of this community is how well our students are able to come out on the other side of this pandemic in terms of their well-being. We, of course, are planning also based on the guidance and the requirements that have been given to us by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We are closely monitoring all the latest information from medical experts, as well as the evolving data from public health around the pandemic, both here in Shrewsbury as well as across Massachusetts. So those continue to be our focus areas as we do this planning work. Next, I'd like to thank so many people for their input. We had a high degree of written feedback from parents and caretakers through our 2020 reopen@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us email. Every one of those emails has been read. We're hoping lots of the questions will be answered in our presentation this evening. Just based on the volume of that and the volume of work, we've not been able to give individual answers to every single email, although each one has been acknowledged. And then we also have a great deal of written feedback from our staff. One of the subcommittees that you'll hear about in a moment will be, put together a Google form where our staff could give feedback on a variety of topics that our subcommittee has utilized in the work that they did to inform this plan. We also, we did convene a reopening task force for subcommittees, 142 staff, who during the summertime, put their time and effort into helping us making sure that we had the voice of staff in developing this work. And we're going to continue to need those voices as we go forward beyond this. Because as was mentioned, this is just one point in a longer process. An important one, because we have a deadline to meet for the state to submit our initial plan, or this plan. But again, the reopening task force and those subcommittees have been extremely helpful in doing this work well, with their ideas, their suggestions, their feedback, their questions. And again, I'm deeply appreciative of all their work. And then I also want to thank our employee associations. The Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, who Mr. Chalmers represents. Unit B, which consists of the assistant principals and athletic director. The Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, who represents our paraprofessionals, who are our aides and our technicians, for ABA technicians. And many of whom, we had a number of paraprofessionals serving on these reopening task force subcommittees as well. We look forward to the continued collaboration and work to make sure that we can get to an agreement that meets all these needs that we have as a school district. And certainly, the school committee and the school administration is committed to doing the bargaining that we need to relative to what's our legal obligation to make this work. And of course, more importantly, meeting our core value as a school district of collaboration and communication. So I want to thank again everyone who's given input to this plan. Our current environment is one, absolutely, and again, as our first public participant said this evening, it's marked by fear and anxiety. That is certainly a reality that we're experiencing. And I don't think it does anyone any good to sugarcoat the reality that that is how a great number of people, I think all people, are feeling to varying degrees. We know that there are risks associated with COVID-19. It's very human and natural to feel some level of concern, whether that's for the health of a loved one, whether that's for one's own health, whether that's for, you know, generally for those in our community. Obviously, no one wants to see anyone who gets sick. And this is a very serious disease, which is why our society has had to react the way that it has. And of course, there is much more to do in order to address this pandemic. We also have fear and anxiety, you know, whether you're a parent, whether you're a teacher, a staff member. There are unknowns right now for the coming school year. We're hoping that this presentation this evening can alleviate some of that anxiety, because people will have more information about how we intend to go forward. But it's still, you know, many of the things are going to be different from what we're used to doing. There's a very natural rhythm to the school year. You can pretty much, educators and educational leaders can pretty much set, you know, they have a sort of a clock in the back of their head in terms of what time of year it is and sort of what you're doing at that point in time. As the calendar has turned to August, this really is the time every year that anxiety goes up a little bit, hopefully in healthy ways for educators, about getting ready and excitement about getting ready to come back to the new school year. But because this new school year will be so different, naturally, there is some fear and anxiety that goes with that. And then on top of that, we have something that is, you know, newer to our society, which is the very significant amplification of all this through the media and social media. It's something that, you know, whatever someone's perspective is or how you might be feeling, you can find a lot of reinforcement for that feeling online and depending on where you look and what voices that you're listening to. And that's something that I think complicates things a bit further. So those are definitely realities. So how do we address those things? Well, in terms of the work that we're doing to plan, we want to make sure that we're taking a proactive and measured approach. So we'll go to the next slide, please. Thank you. What's important, especially being an education organization, I think it's critically important that we're looking at evidence from expert sources, whether those are public health institutions or medical authorities. We have been connecting with not only our own school physician, Dr. Timothy Gibson, who presented to the school committee a couple of meetings ago. We've also been engaged with some other local central mass doctors, Andrea Saronella and I don't have his name in front of me. Noel, can you help me? The other doctor from North Pro, South Pro?
Safdar Medina.
Safdar Medina, thank you. Those three doctors did a webinar for our staff recently. And again, we think it's critically important. Dr. Saronella is from Mass General and Harvard School of Medicine, is the lead author of a document that is actually linked to in the plan that we've released that is a compendium of studies and information that affect the opening of school and school protective organizations. And it's an excellent source. It's considered to be one of the leading sources in the field right now of medicine focused on the issues of schools and going back to school. We're monitoring data carefully. That's the public health data here in Shrewsbury, here in central Massachusetts, across the state. And I think it's absolutely key, again, that we demonstrate flexibility and adaptability in response to what that data is telling us. So with that, I think it's important, this is a slide actually that was shared in a superintendent's meeting today that I thought I would show to the community. This is a slide from Johns Hopkins University that, in a piece on their website, that talks about where it is that states who are in a position that they can be more open and that things such as going back to school should be a possibility. And those are the green lines, the very small elements at the left side of the chart. And you see a green arrow there that points to, that's Massachusetts, which is under the 5% threshold in terms of a 5%, you can see positive test rate on a seven-day average. So Massachusetts remains in a very strong place. And one of the things I think that, again, is complicating things is that you can see those many orange states that are at or above that 5% threshold. And that is where those hotspots are. And then a lot of the national media that we're seeing is referencing the issues that are happening in those states, which is very difficult. Obviously, all of us wish that collectively as a nation, we had done a better job of responding to the pandemic. We have to deal with the situation as it is now. And we need to think about what the situation is here, where we live, and what that means in terms of levels of risk. And so I thought that was important to note that. The next slide just references, again, there was a new email came out today from the town. It reports on Thursdays. The town has now reported that there have been 357 reported cases in Shrewsbury as of today. And that really is just under 1% of our total town population. And just to be clear, that's 357 cases since March. Many of those cases are people who are no longer ill, of course. Sadly, some of those cases represent people who died from COVID. The numbers, the town recently released an age spread. And, you know, the vast majority of those in Shrewsbury who have contracted COVID or have been negatively affected by it are those who are the elderly. And of course, that's very sad. And we're very, you know, obviously, anytime a member of our community becomes ill, and of course, if they die from that illness, that's a devastating situation for their family. But this is really, the only purpose of this is just to show sort of the relative numbers here in Shrewsbury that we're paying attention to and need to keep looking, you know, if they're growing faster? Are they going down? What are the age groups that are being affected? And trying to work with our Central Massachusetts Health Alliance to make sure that we're getting the best data around what that looks like here. But across the state of Massachusetts, you know, Shrewsbury is not a hotspot. And some of the other surrounding communities also are not. But of course, bordering on Worcester, which has had more cases. So that's something that, again, we have to look at, not just about the boundaries of Shrewsbury, but look at our Central Massachusetts area and across the state as well. And, you know, different people will interpret that data differently. And that's why we have to keep looking back to the public health experts and the medical experts about what their interpretation is. So with that, the recommendation, as we mentioned last week in a preliminary way, and tonight formally, my recommendation to the school committee with the caveat that if the public health data remains strong, that we return to school this fall in a hybrid model of in-person and remote learning on an alternating schedule. And what that means is that we would be creating four cohorts of students. The smallest cohort likely is Cohort A, which would be students who actually would come to school each day in person. And those are students who have significant needs, are known as high-need students in the parlance of the state. And the report you'll see, and Ms. Belcito will allude to this in her part of the report, that we are looking at students who have very complex special needs or students who are English language learners or who are at the very beginning stages of learning English. This is based on, again, guidance and regulations that are coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from the Department of Education. So those students have to be prioritized for more in-person time. But again, a very small percentage of our students that that will represent. Then will be two cohorts who will alternate in person, Cohorts B and C. One would attend Monday and Tuesday, two consecutive days in person. And then they would be remote for the rest of the week. Cohort C would be the alternative of that. Wednesday would be a remote day for both Cohorts B and C. And for students in Cohort A, they would attend in the mornings on Wednesday, as Wednesday afternoons are being reserved for a block of planning time for teachers who are trying to manage both of those in-person and remote cohorts in a variety of ways. And it's effective for them to work together to do that. And then there would be Cohort D, because the state has made it clear that families have the opportunity and the right to choose to not send their student to school in person at all and choose a standalone, full-remote learning program. That cohort would be, again, a standalone cohort. I know Ms. Clowder will talk about that more during her part of the presentation. But every family, I know we had some questions about this that came into the email address. Every family, although our recommended model is the hybrid model, families can still choose to have their child stay in an all-remote model. And we'll talk more about that as the presentation goes on. So I wanted to provide some key information for families. We are going to be asking families to make an initial choice of whether they would want their child to participate in the hybrid alternating schedule of in-person and remote or in the standalone, full-remote by Friday, August 14. That's really critical for us, because the number of families who choose each option is necessary for us to know how we have to respond to it as far as our staffing and our programming. So we'll be asking people to do that through the Power School Parent Portal, so we can connect your choice directly with your child. Look for an email early next week with instructions on how to do that. And again, we ask all families to do it by the deadline of Friday, August 14. Just to be clear, there'll be another point after we assign cohorts that families will be able to have one more opportunity to make a switch before the school year begins. But at that point, once the school year begins, students who are in the all-remote standalone cohort will not, if they choose, because this has been a question we've been getting a lot through the email address, you know, if I make a choice and I want to change the program, can I do that? The answer will be yes. But once the school year begins, that switch would not be able to happen right away. We're going to need time to process, to make sure that it's a smooth transition, to make sure that it's not upsetting the balance of numbers, depending, we'd have to decide which cohort to assign that student to, for example. And it may need to wait till a certain part of the grading period, for example, so that they could close out some of the remote work that they're doing and then move into a new cohort. So it is possible to switch. But once the school year begins, it may take even up to as much as probably 30 days. We'll do it faster if we can, of course. But there is going to be some machinations to that. I also want to let families know that next week, we're scheduling three informational webinars online through Zoom. Ms. Fritz will be part of those. I will be part of those. We'll answer your questions. And we're doing that by level, because I'm sure there will be questions that are more unique to a particular level that will make it more efficient for those attending. So we'll do currently, and we'll confirm this via email with links. But currently, we're planning on preschool through grade four to be on Tuesday, August 11. Grades five to eight, the middle school grades, on Wednesday, August 12. And then the high school grades, nine through 12, on Thursday, August 13. Those are all scheduled to begin at 6:30 p.m. And families should look for information via email at the beginning of next week with a Zoom link. We will take some Q and A. We'll try to answer initially some common questions that we've been getting through the email address. And then we'll also take some questions through the Q and A function on Zoom. So we'll look forward to providing more information to families that way. I also want to mention that part of our conversation, as Ms. Fritz mentioned and Mr. Chalmers, we have met multiple times with the leadership of our Teachers Union Association. And we did ask them today what might be some ways for us to make sure that we have an opportunity for staff, whether that's a webinar function. We've had one webinar already with medical experts. We're going to be having some more informational webinars. And whether we'll do that by the subcommittee or in some more general ways. And we'll continue, of course, to communicate with our staff via email as well. So staff can look for more information coming in the days and weeks ahead as well. So I wanted to share that with the, in terms of how we're trying to get opportunities for families to make sure that they have the information they need to make the most informed choice when they let us know on Friday what their preference is. The last piece, before I turn it over to the next presenter, is I want to mention school calendar changes that we're recommending as part of this plan. And later in the school committee meeting, we'll ask the school committee to vote on our revised calendar. Commissioner Jeff Riley, who's the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education for the state of Massachusetts, has reached a statewide agreement with teacher unions, those are the state-level teacher unions, around providing 10 days of training, orientation, planning, before we open school in this new way, which I think is an excellent idea. I think to make sure that all the different protocols that need to be in place, that the way we're going to need to teach kids in some different ways under a hybrid model or with some students being remote. So they're reducing the mandatory school year from 180 to 170 instructional days and replacing those 10 first days with days for staff to do training, orientation, and collaboration. So my recommendation is that our staff begin on the day when they were originally going to be starting. That would be our opening day, traditional opening day with meetings and orientation and so forth, as planned on August 31. And then there'd be 10 working days essentially with Labor Day there. That brings us to Tuesday, September 15, as the first day of school. Whether a student's in a remote cohort or the in-person cohort, they would begin their studies essentially on Tuesday, September 15. We are also, based on the advice of principals, making the recommendation that the first four days that week, September 15 through 18, be early release days on an early release schedule. That way, that the two days that each cohort of students is there. That time will go quickly, of course. And we're going to make sure that, need to make sure that the protocols that they need to follow for things like lunch are very clear and presented to them clearly before we actually have them going through an actual school lunch. So the school lunches will begin the following week with full days of in-person school those days. And there will be some expectations for students to be doing remote work in the afternoons. And we'll take advantage of the time with our staff to make sure that whatever we're implementing, if we have to tweak it, we're going to be able to make sure that that's a good phase in to get into making sure we're doing it well and doing it right. So that's the plan for the calendar. And we'll ask the school committee to vote on that separately, along with this plan, later in the meeting. Also, along with that, the Professional Development Day that was originally on September 1 would be moved to January 15, which is the Friday prior to Martin Luther King Day. We were releasing all, or excuse me, eliminating all Tuesday early release days because of, obviously, this different model, we don't need them. And the last day of school, based on this calendar, would be Wednesday, June 16. That will be subject to change. There's one additional day that may come back as a workday in the calendar for staff. It depends on the outcome of a vote that the SEA is taking tomorrow relative to an agreement with the school committee around cost mitigation. It also may change due to snow days, although depending on, because of the remote learning situation, it's quite possible that days when we cancel in-person school will still count towards instructional days because of the ability to complete remote learning. But we'll cross that bridge when we get to colder weather. We have But we'll, we'll get, we'll cross that bridge when we get to colder weather. We have lots to do before then. But currently, Wednesday, June 16th is when the last day of school would be on this calendar. And with that, as we, because health and safety is the most important part of our plan, the first presenter this evening, after this initial information, is Noelle Freeman, who's our Director of School Nursing. And she will hit an overview of how this plan addresses the health and safety of our students and our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. As reported to the committee a few weeks ago by Dr. Gibson and myself, district decisions related to health and safety are based on local and state data, consultation with our local public health officials, and the growing body of scientific research, all while taking into account the feedback and concerns of our stakeholders, namely our staff and families. With all of this in mind, a combination of mitigation strategies will be implemented in our schools in order to limit the spread of COVID-19-related illness. First, masks will be required for all staff and all students preschool through grade 12. Masks have been shown to be one of the most effective ways to limit the spread of COVID-19 and we believe that with very few exceptions, all students are capable of wearing a mask in school. We ask that families partner with us by working with their children at home on increased tolerance of wearing masks in the weeks leading up to our return to in-person learning. Next is physical distancing. In combination with wearing face masks, physical distancing is believed to be essential in limiting the spread of COVID-19. In order to maximize safety, the district will use a distance of six feet as our standard. It's important to note that six feet is a standard or a goal, but not an absolute requirement at all times. The purpose is to avoid close contact, which is defined as being within six feet for 10 to 15 minutes or more. Therefore, momentary or brief contact such as passing in the hallway or moving about a classroom to check student work, gather supplies, et cetera, while wearing a mask is permitted and is considered safe. Dedensification of our spaces will be the result of our recommendation of a hybrid alternating days model. The smaller number of students in the buildings at any given time makes six feet distancing in classrooms possible. Hand washing or hand sanitizing is one of our most basic and most reliable ways to limit the spread of most infections, including COVID-19. Students and staff will be encouraged to wash their hands several times a day and hand sanitizer will be available when soap and water is not an option. In order to limit contacts in our buildings, visitors will not be allowed. Families who have a need to access the buildings will need to call ahead to discuss their need and determine next steps. Next slide, please. The final mitigation strategy that I'll talk about tonight is very important and will require the cooperation and compliance of all staff and families. We will require that an at-home screening, which is represented on this slide, be done each day. The screening asks people to evaluate the COVID-19 symptoms listed, think about any close contact with individuals who have tested positive for COVID-19, any travel outside of Massachusetts, or a recent history of fever-reducing medication. Answering yes to any of the screening questions will require the individual to remain at home until further evaluation occurs and next steps are determined. Staying home if ill will be a crucial strategy in mitigating the risk and spread of COVID-19. Next, I'll briefly review a couple of protocols that have been developed for COVID-19 scenarios that may occur in our schools. The first scenario is that of a symptomatic individual. As just noted, if the daily screening results in a yes, people must stay home for the protection and safety of all. If symptoms do develop while in school, students and staff should report to the school nurse for evaluation. As you can see from this list of COVID-19 symptoms, many of the COVID symptoms mimic those of other common illnesses. And in the past, many of these were symptoms that students were permitted to return to class with. Our school nurses' threshold for dismissal for these symptoms will be much lower now. And those who are sent home will require follow-up with a healthcare provider. When a student or staff person is sent home from school with positive, possible COVID-19 symptoms, testing will be required for return. You can see here what the outcome of positive, negative, or no testing will be. This information is detailed in the protocols document that is linked in the full report. The other scenario that we are getting a lot of questions about is what will happen if there is a positive case in the school community? If and when we are notified of a positive case of COVID-19, I will work with the school nurse in the building and the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance on the particular details of the case. Close contacts will be identified and notified of the need to quarantine, keeping confidential the identity of the positive individual. Due to the public health risk, staff are required to notify the district if they or members of their household are diagnosed with COVID-19. We ask that families partner with us by doing the same. While this information will be made available to us via the Department of Public Health, the fastest way for us to receive this is directly from the staff or family who tests positive. In closing, I'd like to stress how essential it is that all members of the school committee, community, including students, staff, and families take seriously the need to adhere to the combination of all of these strategies. No one strategy will work on its own and we must work together to create as safe as possible an in-person environment and to reduce the risk of COVID-19 in our community. Now Amy Clouder will share some information about return-to-school options for students.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman. Preparing to reopen our schools is always a coordinated effort. And that's more true than ever this year. In addition to working together all summer as an administrative team, together with our principals, together with you, which is nice to see you over the summer, I really appreciate that our educators, including our SEA representatives, have partnered with us as part of our task force to prepare the plan we recommended. We've also partnered with outside organizations, as Mrs. Freeman alluded to and Dr. Sawyer, to ensure that our plans are sound, including the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, other districts, medical experts. It's been an extraordinarily busy time. And people have selected a variety of metaphors to describe this period. You're likely familiar with some of the sillier ones. My vote for best metaphor goes to Tiffany Osterlander, principal at Coolidge School, who likened the process to working on a puzzle. And I think we're at the point where we've successfully found all of the flat edges. We've framed our preferred plan and there's pieces in the middle that we still have to tinker with. We've been able to do that because we're a cohesive team in a district where we share values and beliefs that lead our work. And together with educators, our experts on effective instruction, together with families who've shared heartwarming stories about what they miss most about school or what they've enjoyed most about extended school, together with principals and district leaders who feel it is possible for us to stay safe and maintain our programming, given the skill and dedication of our staff and the support of our school communities. I want to thank the numerous educators and district leaders helping to plan for reopening. On the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Team, we had 62 educators in three different groups, one for each level. I just totaled up the hours for one of those levels at 203 hours so far, which is the equivalent of doing about five weeks of work in slightly less than a month's time. And I'm enormously grateful for the ideas, the questions, and most importantly, everyone's candor about what it feels like to face reopening school. Because those things, in addition to the ongoing input from educators from the Health and Wellness Survey, really informed some of our thinking. And one example of the pieces we have yet to kind of put together in the middle are the FAQs that we're developing to respond to some of those concerns from, from both a staff perspective and a family perspective. So in our last meeting, I talked a little bit about the guidance from the department prompting districts to think of options for reopening on a continuum. And after looking at the analysis of our school buildings, it became clear that managing passing times and routines and considerations like arrival and dismissal is best done by widening the physical distance. So the recommendation to maintain six-foot distance safely allows for our classrooms to accommodate both large and small group learning, the engines that we know to kind of really fuel individualized instruction. It also allows for mask breaks, keeping us safe, and more space in each classroom that enable our educators to preserve the very best aspects of in-person instruction. But it also means that we'd have to limit the number of people in the building at one time, effectively removing from this continuum the in-person full return to school. So what are the two options that remain? I've adjusted the timeline here that I shared last week to reflect our next steps. As you can see, we have to plan with DESI requirements in mind and most importantly, work with Shrewsbury families and educators to communicate our preferred learning model, which we've done, to respond to the needs of families, students, and staff as they make decisions, and to implement our reopening plan informed by those choices. So you can see that we submit a formal plan to the DESE on the 10th of August and we are preparing tonight so that the community is ready for that. And in between, we'll be asking families to choose a model so that we get a better sense of the numbers in the cohorts Dr. Sawyer described. So why would we consider a hybrid model? The best argument I can make is depicted in that picture there, the young man with his cat. You can see that the cat is enjoying himself, but I've heard from lots of families that they're really, really ready to relinquish their teaching duties. And we really miss our students. All spring, we thought about, you know, what's happening at home. And from the perspective of teaching and learning, we know that the sooner that we can reengage in in-person learning, the better for our students. To be clear, our educators were able to meaningfully connect with and instruct our students online. And I'm sure they can do that again. They got really good at it. I also know that while our teachers and their students connected, some of our staff are really nervous about coming back to school. And although they miss them, are a little bit, you know, anxious about what that's going to look like as a safe return. But regardless of the different perspectives that people hold, I think we agree that there's no substitute for the power of learning in a classroom. And skillful teaching is best informed by assessment and assessment is best done in person. So from a teaching and learning perspective, again, if we can guarantee a safe return, because that's our priority, a hybrid learning model will allow educators to more consistently connect with and effectively engage all students, which is why that we're recommending we reopen with a hybrid model of learning. So at this point, if you've been tuning in, you know we're not alone in choosing the hybrid model. We've chosen it along with other geographic neighbors and members of the Assabett Valley communities. And families have likely heard that they'll have to make a choice. So my hope tonight is to describe the different models clearly so families can make those good choices. And in turn, we have the information we need to put together more nuanced plans, including rosters, schedules, class lists, and all of the things that follow a typical reopening. So Dr. Sawyer has mentioned already that in a hybrid model, we have to plan for the needs of four cohorts of students. Cohort A is the smallest group, made up of the kids with the most needs as learners. Cohorts B and C alternate instruction so that Cohort B attends on Mondays and Tuesdays and learns remotely the rest of the week. Cohort C attends on Thursdays and Fridays and learns remotely Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And Cohort D is the only cohort that kind of stands alone. And we'll talk about that when we describe the standalone model. A hybrid model is a blended model of in-person instruction and remote learning at home. So the numbers of each group are really important. We hope to split students alphabetically and I thank Eric Bauer and Brian for thinking about how do you make sure that you can blend the two cohorts so that we have balanced numbers and safe numbers in our school? At the moment, you know, we've talked about various ways of splitting the alphabet, but I don't want families to think that, oh, that means I'm automatically in one cohort or the other because we have to obviously see the impact of parent choices on what those numbers are. And we might need to skew those, those letters in different ways than you might be thinking. But we are going to divide students alphabetically by last name so that we can keep siblings together so that families have a common schedule. And we might need to tweak the numbers a little bit to do that. Numbers also play a part in kindergarten programming. A hybrid model is simpler in grades one to 12 because when we have half-day programming, we have a different set of challenges. So it's our hope to enroll as many kindergarteners as possible within the hybrid schedule I've described. But our capacity to provide a hybrid schedule to half-day K will be determined once we know how many families select a full-remote option for their children. The good news is if your child is enrolled in full-day kindergarten, tuition won't be assessed in either a hybrid or a remote model. So this visual model might help people better familiarize themselves with that, what that blend of instruction will be like. So you can see at the tops, the left Cohort A would be attending all five days. And then you can see Cohort B on those gold days where we have in-person instruction. And then you can see the mirror of that schedule for Cohort B. And you can see in blue at the bottom that Cohort D is not attending school. There are no times on this schedule, but we anticipate that students would attend in the normal hours of school the way they were before pre-closure. So when parents, oops, sorry, can you go back? When parents see that schedule, they immediately think, oh, okay, well, what if my kid is home, remote learning? Could they dial in because other kids are in school? And, you know, mindful of the fact that not all teaching moves really translate well on video. Trying to attend to both groups can kind of compromise the experience for kids at, learning at school and kids learning at home. I remember a certain fourth-grade teacher at Coolidge School who famously demonstrates the impact of glaciers on land formations by scooting across the table and startling her students into fully paying attention to that deep geography. That would sound really funny online. And I'm not sure that you'd be able to catch it. She moves so quickly when she does it. But, you know, for that, and furthermore, I can, the research on live streaming, particularly for kids in a K-12 model, doesn't suggest that that's a really beneficial thing to do, much tempting as it is. But our educators are innovators and some of our teachers may want to experiment with live video, particularly in, in programming where demonstration is helpful, like art. So if you're doing a technique and, and you want kids to kind of tune in, that might be an appropriate way to experiment with that. Thanks, Jean. So the benefit of a hybrid model is that students and teachers get to learn together. And when in-person instruction resumes, we might look a little different with masks, but teaching and learning will feel familiar. So I don't feel like I have to describe kind of what happens on those gold days when we're together. But remote instruction in any of the models I described tonight will look different for two reasons. For one thing, our own educators suggested some key changes. We learned as we did last year. And family and survey results helped inform some of our thinking about what families needed, including kind of directions for how to make technology more effective. But secondly, over the summer, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education established new requirements and those are reflected in our guidelines and schedules. Specifically, the department has signaled that remote learning will have to reflect more time on learning. Approximately a five-hour day for kids in elementary and middle school and five and a half for high school. Mandatory attendance, so it's expected that everyone shows up for Zoom sessions and completes their work. Our curriculum has to reflect all of our standards and not just power standards. So the curriculum would mirror what the curriculum would look like under normal circumstances. And that kids should regularly receive assigned work and teachers should be grading and providing feedback on that work. In other words, unlike last year, we will, we plan on delivering content typically covered in person when school's in session. So if the hybrid model is one choice, what's the other? For a variety of reasons, we understand some families may want their children to continue learning in a fully-remote model. And the fully-remote part is clear. There's no in-person instruction in this model. But we use the term standalone because students in this model will be grouped separately from students learning in the hybrid model. It's not feasible for educators responsible for cohorts A, B, and C to also plan instruction for a full-remote program and monitor the students in that program. And students that elect a full-remote model will be supported by different educators. So the question for us is whether those different educators will be Shrewsbury Public School teachers. And the answer is, we don't know yet. Until we know how many families choose the standalone program, we can't really determine staffing needs effectively. And it may be necessary for that reason to consider a third-party educational organization to provide either the right amount of or the right type of programming. For example, if you have a student in Cohort D who elects to take Mandarin Chinese, we may not have an educator who also elects to teach fully remotely. And that same may be true for some of our science courses or some of our other electives at the high school level. So for that reason, the department has been looking at different companies that provide educational programming in a remote way. educational programming in a remote way. Some of them include a teacher, those that include teachers are much more expensive because they include teachers, and some offer programming that then could be facilitated by our teacher. Those are two companies at the bottom of your screen that they talked to us about, I think it was just yesterday, Dr. Sawyer, is that correct? We had a webinar on that yesterday. And so these programs would require some facilitation of a student experience, I imagine, and we'd have to think about whether that would be a good way of approaching Cohort D students, depending on how many kids we're, we're talking about. So if we did go with an educational company and for pandemic conditions required us to transition to remote learning for every student, in other words, we could no longer have in-person instruction and we'd have to transition from a hybrid model for most kids, we'd reserve the right to kind of reassign those students because now we would be going from a model where we had a separate Cohort D from the hybrid groups, and all of those kids would be together in one cohort, learning remotely. And depending on, you know, how we contract with other companies or whether we consider that model, that gives us the most flexibility to kind of keep kids together and provide the programming we know to be really high quality. If a student is in Cohort D, they would still be required to attend and be graded, the department's really clear about that, and they would have an instructional day that would be sufficient to be awarded coursework credit if they completed it at Shrewsbury High School. Students would be eligible to participate in co-curricular activities because we think it's important for students who may be home because they're medically fragile or they live with someone who's medically fragile to still feel connected to their school community. We're not quite sure what will be allowed with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requirements, so we say that with that big caveat, but we are interested in maintaining those home-to-school connections for all students, no matter what cohorts they're in. So over the summer, we typically field questions from families about homeschooling, and I think in this time, it's particularly confusing for families when they're thinking about the choice, if they are reluctant to send a kid back, does that mean they're homeschooling? Essentially, choosing to homeschool your child is like enrolling your child in a private school, only you're the teacher at home. And for that reason, most families that choose to homeschool, well, all families are un-enrolling, and they're not, most children are not eligible for participation in Shrewsbury programs or activities per the school committee policy. The exception for that is students who have individual education plans or IEPs who still would be able to receive services in the public schools. So as Dr. Sawyer mentioned, following this presentation, specific family preferences by student will be requested through Power School, and as soon as we have that information, we can do some more nuanced planning. But we want the community and especially our educators to understand that those pieces of the puzzle are set on the outside, but we're still actively planning with the pieces in the middle. And training, guidelines for parents, expectations for students, those are things that we're developing together with the members of the task force. And we continue to refine our planning. We've always partnered with our teachers, we'll continue to do that. And just as families are learning about what the experience has been like at home, I think in our school system, we're learning too. I'm really eager to hear from our educators, especially now that they've had time to reflect over the summer, what kinds of training that they'd like to receive in those nine days of school, you know, leading up to the start of school, what kind of planning time and professional development they're looking for to feel more comfortable and prepared, and what kinds of supports they found most effective. We heard, as you might recall, that collaboration was one of those benefits that we kind of universally agreed was, was a great outcome of the pandemic. And so we want to make sure that we foster and continue to support those structures that really helped people to collaborate effectively. So that concludes the curriculum instruction and assessment portion. I'm going to pass it over to Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Mike Belzino.
Thanks, Amy. The mission of the Student Services Department is to identify students who meet the federal and state criteria for disability requiring specialized instruction and/or accommodations through an individualized education program or a 504 accommodation plan. It is Shrewsbury's mission to provide services in the least restrictive environment that will empower access to our students to become active members of society based on their individual strengths and abilities. As a district, we are committed to providing an inclusive setting of dedicated multidisciplinary teams while involving parents and community members to help meet the academic, emotional, and social needs of all of our students in a respectful and positive environment. Our vision is to afford all students the opportunity to succeed through high-quality, evidence-based practices, and we will do so by connecting and communicating with families, students, school teams, and the greater community. Together, we will focus on the positive attributes and recognize the individual strengths and achievements of our students while promoting their future successes. The following points were the collective work of the Student Services Subcommittee, and I must note that the work is not done. We are, we are continuing to create this roadmap, and it was composed of representatives from preschool through grade 12, including administrators, team chairs, special educators, related service providers, and paraprofessionals. The team reflected on our previous practices and the successes and challenges of remote learning. This outline is suggested for how we will engage our students with disabilities with the reliance on collaboration between school, family, and students. Specially-designed instruction will continue to be individualized based on the student's needs and profile. Shrewsbury Public Schools has prioritized in-person instructions for students who are classified as high needs and is prepared to meet the needs of these students should the district shift to remote or hybrid learning. Students with disabilities will be provided a free and appropriate public education consistent with their education, specialized instruction, and/or related services. Liaisons will consult with each student's family to discuss the individual student's ability to access remote learning, as well as how and where specially-designed instruction will occur. To the extent possible, in-person services will be provided by the designated licensed practitioner with health and safety protocols in place. Specially-designed instruction may occur through video conferencing or teletherapy in a small group or individually. The licensed practitioner will design and deliver this instruction. Each student's instruction should be a unique reflection of the child's individual needs and abilities to access learning. Student's instruction may change based on their performance levels and their abilities to access services in their current model. Progression in a service model may lead to changing to a different model of service. Student's progress will be monitored by the liaison and classroom teachers. Students with complex, complex and significant needs who meet the following criteria must be prioritized for in-person to the greatest extent possible based on the Department of Education guidance, as is feasible within the health and safety parameters. High needs through the IEP process and on an IEP form titled Primary Disability Level of Need PL3. Students already identified as must meet at least two of these criteria. Services provided outside of the general education classroom. Service providers are special education teachers and related service providers. Special education services constitute more than 75% of the student's school day. Students who cannot engage in remote learning due to their disability-related needs. Students who primarily use aided and augmentative communication. Students duly identified as English learners. Even in a hybrid model, Shrewsbury is dedicated to providing in-person instruction for those students classified as high needs through instruction and services model of delivery as outlined by the Department of Education. Students will be on campus to receive education from the general educator, as well as specially-designed instruction in small groups or individually according to the frequency outlined in the student's individualized plan. Specially-designed instruction may include structured lessons, teletherapy, video-based lessons, et cetera. If Shrewsbury needs to shift to an all-remote learning, students will be given a specific schedule to follow outlining synchronous and asynchronous learning. Structured learning time will be designated to target the child's individual goals and their services. Students will spend time working directly with teachers, related providers through video conferencing and teletherapies. Special educators and related service providers will manage and engage in ongoing data collection using curriculum-based measures, informal classroom assessments, observation of student academic performance and behavior, and discussions with key stakeholders to adjust, design, and implement instructional practices. As is true across the state, Shrewsbury acknowledges a backlog of early intervention transitions, school-based assessments, and team meetings due to the unexpected suspension of in-person education in March. IEP teams must continue to conduct annual team meetings as they are due in accordance with the law. IEPs will be written as though school was in a full in-person session. As stated by the Department of Education, it's important to note that a change in delivery of services due to the school's change in a learning model, in-person, hybrid, or remote as a result of COVID-19, does not result in a change in placement. Section 504 Accommodation Plans will continue to be individualized based on each student's need and profile. 504 coordinators will ensure plans are shared with the staff, whether they're in-person, hybrid, or remote, or any combination of the models of instruction. 504 accommodation plans will be implemented to give students access to the same education as their peers. 504 accommodation will be, will remain in place for students while they are physically in school and as they apply for remote learning. All plans developed during the 2020 school year will be written as though school was in full-person sessions. To start the 2020 school year, all IEP and 504 team meetings will be held virtually through the online platform of Zoom. If guidance shifts to allow for in-person meetings, the district will begin to schedule those meetings on school campuses. With that being said, the district will honor requests from families to hold meetings remotely even if in-person meetings are feasible. Shrewsbury will continue to partner with families in order to meet all student needs. Prioritization has also been indicated for our preschool children with and without disabilities who are particularly in need of in-person services so they can develop the socialization, motor, and communication skills that are vitally important at this age. Shrewsbury Public Schools will follow the Department of Education guidance and will consult the guidance provided by the Department of Early Education and Care. Parker Road Preschool will work with families to ensure family engagement strategies are in place, especially for families and children who are new to our schools. Additional recommendations to consider when addressing the unique needs of preschool children with disabilities. An extension of early intervention services is available for children who turn three between March 15th and August 31st of this year. For those students, early intervention can continue until special education eligibility can be completed and the child has transitioned to special education, or until October 15th of this year. As a result of the pandemic, our district may have been unable to conduct evaluations, convene IEP meetings, and initiate services by the child's third birthday. Therefore, Shrewsbury can expect an increased number of children needing to complete the eligibility determination process for special education and an increased number of children needing this service. Shrewsbury will be prepared to complete the transition process, have completed assessments, and an IEP signed for this group of students by October 15th. Special education staff at Parker Road Preschool are amazing and have been closely communicating with our early intervention providers and families around the transition process, including the completion of assessments and the eligibility for special education services for the provision of faith. In addition to public preschool programs, the least restrictive environment for preschool children includes natural environments, which consists of childcare centers, community centers, and the home. Consultation between our district and childcare center staff and families for carryover activities related to IEP goals can be addressed in a variety of environments. In addition to providing in-person services when health and safety standards are being met, additional specially-designed instruction may also include structured lessons, teletherapy, video-based lessons, et cetera. In addition, staff may use prerecorded enrichment activities aimed at providing practice and/or generalization opportunities outside of live, of live learning time. Shrewsbury Public Schools will also be conducting kindergarten screening as set forth under the law to screen three and four-year-old children for the child find process and for all children who are aged, of age to enter kindergarten. At this time, kindergarten screening will occur in the first month of school in the classroom environment. However, the exception to the screening students in the fall would be if a student has a suspected disability and/or has already been referred to the, for a special education evaluation. If this is the case, then the school team will adhere to the guidelines. Given the specific health and safety requirements, efforts will be made to reconfigure instructional space to encourage activities that allow children to spread out across the classroom, the preschool classroom. The district continues to work to develop social stories for our students to share with families closer to the start of school in order to prepare the students for what the physical environment and staff in the classroom will look like. Also, child-friendly visual supports and strategies will be in the hallways and classroom to encourage children to maintain physical distance between themselves, staff, and peers. Even in a hybrid model, Shrewsbury is dedicated to providing in-person instruction for our preschool children with and without disabilities. If Shrewsbury needs to shift to an all-remote learning, students will be given a specific schedule to follow outlining synchronous and asynchronous learning. Particular consideration for our youngest students will be to find a balance between screen time and non-screen time. If a student has an IEP, structured learning time will be designated to target the children's, child's individual goals and services. We continue to create safe and supportive learning environments that proactively support student behavior in each of the three learning models. Efforts are being made for direct whole-school and class-wide instruction to establish routines, social skills, individualized social stories, et cetera, particularly following the disruption to school routines and with new health and safety requirements. Students will re-acclimate to learning and school routines at different rates. Classroom and support staff will monitor the mental and behavioral health needs of all students. Under the multi-tiered system of support, additional considerations may be given regarding things like anxiety and/or trauma from the impact of the reintegration into the typical school life begins. Adhering to the health and safety guidelines may be challenging or frightening to some students with and without disabilities. This, this can include the wearing of masks, maintaining social distancing, adapting to new routines and protocols. The retraining and the development of strategies that address the pandemic itself and the return to school will be integrated into school and classroom lessons and routines. The district continues to prioritize student well-being as we return from remote learning during this pandemic, as well as staff well-being. School psychologists and adjustment counselors will continue to collaborate with building administrators and educators to monitor student engagement. Family-student outreach is critical in student learning. Students who did not engage in remote learning due to their disability-related needs during the spring school closure, on-campus support will be made available with carryover activities provided by a paraprofessional or other educators. Mental health interventions will also be monitored for efficacy of student stabilization using Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three supports. Later, or in a few moments, you'll hear Dr. Lozot talk about staff well-being, and she will mention the tiered systems of support developed by the BRIGHT program, which is the bridge for resilient youth in transition, who we have engaged with for consultation over the past few years for programming at Shrewsbury High School and Sherwood Middle School. And now, during this time, the district has contracted with them to have consultation to our leadership team and our subcommittee work for the transition to our next normal. Staff will also monitor students' basic needs, food, health, water. It's a huge task in front of us, and will make coordinated efforts to meet the student and family needs. The district is looking to promote the well-being and health of our students. We're promoting that our students and families complete surveys, questionnaires, and screeners that address issues of mental health and resiliency. The information and data gained from participation will enable the district to respond in a timely manner if a student requires assistance, support, or interventions. The district is planning on providing additional tools and resources to our staff to respond to student mental and behavioral health needs. This includes training topics such as trauma-informed care, verbal de-escalation strategies, tiered systems of support, cultural competency and equity in building new routines and rituals. Finally, we can't emphasize enough that the district acknowledges and prioritizes the emotional well-being of all students and staff, and that this needs to be balanced with the health and safety requirements with child development needs is something that will continue to evolve during this time of significant transition. The district will rely on the expertise of educators to ensure daily schedules and activities are designed to foster physical distancing in the most effective way to stop the virus spread while continuing to do what they do best, bringing joy to children, fostering a love for learning, and monitoring the emotional well-being of our staff. and monitoring the emotional well-being of our staff and our students. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. LaRue to talk about technology.
So in order to ensure that all of our students are able to participate equitably into various learning scenarios, we're going to be expanding our one-to-one technology program by issuing devices to students in grades K through four in addition to our existing grade five through 12 one-to-one program that we've had for the past few years. So for kindergarten students, we'll be reissuing devices that we've taken from classrooms and shared carts on the elementary schools for grades one. And two, we're going to be reissuing devices that were turned in by the class of 2020 and devices that we will be collecting from the rising freshmen coming to the high school. And for grades three and four, we were able to purchase new iPads using CARES Act funding. Distribution windows will be happening throughout the rest of the summer. We actually ran our first window for grade two through five parents yesterday and today, continuing through next week. And these vary by grade level, and we'll be notifying parents as additional windows become, happen during the rest of the summer. And one thing to note is that all items that we're reusing from elsewhere in the district are being cleaned with disinfecting wipes before we reissue them. As we did earlier in the closure, and this slide's taking a minute, we are going to be continuing to provide cellular-capable iPads to students who have no internet access at home. We ran a survey at the start of the closure to initially find that out, and we found out through the course of the weeks, you know, who has access and who doesn't. So we'll be continuing that service as well. And we've also continued to invest in learning platforms. These platforms were in place at the end of last school year and will be continuing access for these platforms. One platform is CSO, which is a learning management system for elementary students. This allows teachers to push out materials, videos, class communication. It allows students to complete activities, post videos, and also communicate with their teacher as well. Schoology is another learning management system that's been in place in grades five through 12 for the past number of years, the past few years since we expanded the one-to-one program to the high school. That also allows parents, students, and teachers to communicate, students to access coursework, submit coursework, and also allows extracurricular groups within the school to communicate and collaborate as well. And finally, we're going to be continuing with our educational purchase of Zoom. The purchase of the educational version allows us to take advantage of a number of additional security and privacy features. One important one is the requiring, the requirement that participants sign in to the meeting using their SPS account to prevent unwanted participants. And also, the educational version allows us to take advantage of an enhanced privacy policy as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins for operations information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaRue. Well, I'm excited to talk to the school committee and the community about some of the support services that, of course, surround our academic program and support our parents and students getting to school and getting through the school day. So we're going to talk about school transportation, food service, facilities, and then finish up with the co-curricular program. And talk about all of the ways in which these support services are being adapted to provide some significant impact in mitigating the potential of spread of COVID. So first, in accordance with the Department of Ed guidance for school transportation, we will be limiting ridership to one student per bench on each of our school buses. The one exception to that would be siblings who we expect and will ride together on the same bench. Of course, they're in the same household, so that makes sense. We do plan to hire more bus monitors at the outset of the school year for a few weeks to help students getting on the bus into a seat, make sure they're sitting in the right place, social distancing, maintaining their mask, things like that, and then debarking from the bus. And so that help, we think, will help the school bus driver and kind of set the tone, if you will, for how to ride the bus in this new manner. We don't think we're going to need them beyond the first few weeks as students adapt. It is a high-cost item, but we think it's worthwhile upfront to start the year. Buses will be sanitized at a minimum on a daily basis. We know that the school committee has voted to waive the fee for the first half of the school year because of the uncertainty about the level of service that's being provided and possible intermittent closures. And we don't want to have any kind of obstacles in terms of getting schoolchildren back on the bus, getting them to school, and mitigating traffic problems at all of our schools. So I think that was a very prudent decision. I'm happy to report that we publicly launched school bus registration, of course, three days ago, without parents having all of this information. And we have just over 2,000 students who have registered to ride the school bus. So we've got a strong indicator there of parents and students ready to come back to in-person education. The one thing that I will remark on is that there have been a few questions about parents who heard the presentation about the initial leaning of the plan from Dr. Sawyer last week about the various cohorts and hybrid model. And so if parents are going to select to have their student be in remote education, we do not want those parents registering for the bus to try to reserve a seat for the future. That's not going to be helpful. And before we assign seating, we're going to kind of do a comparison between bus registration and the cohort selection. So it would be really helpful if you don't do that. Of course, if there was a change to be made from remote back into in-person, we'll make accommodations based upon the capacity that we have to get students back on buses at that time. Seating will be allocated on a priority basis, three different categories of priorities. First and foremost is those students, of course, that we're required to provide transportation to by law. Secondly, those students who may not fall into that category but are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And I know that was a concern expressed by some school committee members earlier. So it'll be a Group Two priority. And then Group Three priority will be all other students. And I'm hitting just the high points. All of the details of those group priorities are in this detailed report. Again, over 80 pages that's on our webpage right now. Food services, we're certainly going to provide meals for students eligible for free and reduced lunch regardless of the modality of education. And we did that during the school closure. When we had remote education, we had a single point of distribution at the high school. We were servicing parents up there and students several times per week and giving students enough meals for the entire week. So we'll continue to do that in a remote mode. And of course, once we start school with students in person, we'll be providing basically a prepackaged bagged lunch and closing down any kind of salad bar or condiment bars, those things where you had multiple people, students touching, that will all be eliminated. Of course, we'll be adhering to Department of Ed guidance around six-foot social distancing during the lunchtime as students remove their masks to eat. Gymnasiums, most likely, all of them will be repurposed as secondary seating areas for cafeterias. That does not mean that we're eliminating Phys Ed program or Health or Family Consumer Science. Those programs will simply adapt based upon the usage of the gymnasiums during the lunch service period. And certainly, all of the cafeteria tables and desks will be cleaned in between each lunch period. In terms of facilities, this information, of course, all of our facilities are managed by the Public Facilities Division. And both Keith Baldinger and Angela Snell have been part of our Operations and Technology Subcommittee. We appreciate their participation. There have been recommendations made by the Department of Ed around management of HVAC systems and custodial services. And we'll be adhering to all of those recommendations. The Public Facilities Division is also, while it's not necessary, they are pursuing a third-party independent review of our HVAC systems with a report to be provided as soon as that can be done to help inform us about any potential gaps that we have that we don't know about. And while it's, again, not necessary nor required that every educational space be where, you know, where there's windows, that's not a requirement. Where those windows do exist, certainly, staff will be able to open those windows. And it is the guidance where those are available to help with air exchange. So that will be certainly weather permitting. In terms of the regular daytime operation, the custodial staff, there'll be some so-called surge staffing, if you will, additional people being hired either by the Public Buildings Division or augmented from contract cleaning companies to do much more daytime cleaning of all the high-touch areas. And then also be the staff personnel to help with cleaning of cafeteria tables, desk in between lunch periods, additional cleaning of restrooms. All schools will be sanitized with the fogging machine between cohorts. The cohort changes, so that will certainly be part of the plan going forward. And we think it's prudent at this point that all the playground equipment and structures be shut down initially at the beginning of the school year because it's just too hard to try to manage cleaning with students using those at recess. We're going to shut those down at the beginning. So all of those things with respect to food service, transportation, and facilities, again, significant adaptations that we believe in concert with other measures like PPE, good hand-washing protocols, all those things in combination. All of these various layers will serve to mitigate the potential spread of COVID. The last piece I want to talk about is extended school care services, athletics, and after-school clubs and activities. We think that with respect to the extended school care program, it's important that we put that on hiatus for the month of September because of this very complicated work to plan for the reopening of our schools in the daytime program. And our extended school care program has over 600 children in it, K through six. And we really do want to resume providing that much-needed service for our parents, but we believe it's just too complicated right now to try to figure all of that out and not have cross-contamination of cohorts, if you will, or elevate that without some more prior planning. So we're going to keep that on hiatus till approximately October 2nd. In terms of athletics, the Oak Middle School intramural and interscholastic programs for the fall are canceled. And that is also in concert with our area peer schools who offer interscholastic middle school sports programs through the MidWatch League. All of those other communities have also canceled those at the middle school level. At the high school level, we know that those programs are regulated by two different agencies, actually, three, the Department of Education, the MIAA, and then also the MidWatch League. And right now, all high school athletics and Massachusetts are delayed at least until September 14th. And, you know, our plan is, of course, is to resume those as soon as possible provided it's permitted by those three different agencies. And with respect to after-school clubs and activities, again, we're going to kind of take a slow-go approach on those. We want to start those as soon as it's possible to do that in a safe manner. Some of those clubs and activities could continue kind of on a remote basis. So it'll be kind of on a school-by-school basis and a club-by-club basis. But I do want to reiterate one thing Mrs. Clowder mentioned earlier about the various cohorts. You make the distinction between those students who opt for Cohort D, which is the remote learning provided by the district, which is different than a family or students unenrolling their child from the district and saying, "We're just going to go it on our own. We're going to go find our own plan, and we're going to go homeschool." If parents do that, homeschool, or "I'm going to unenroll and find my own educational plan," those students will not be eligible to participate in sports or extracurriculars per the school committee policy. However, differently, if parents or students choose Cohort D, which is the full remote, those students still remain fully enrolled in our school district and will remain full members of each school community and sports teams if they choose, or clubs or activities. So I just wanted to make that distinction. And that's what I have, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lozot right now to talk about some important staff well-being topics.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And I'd like to begin by thanking the 19 subcommittee members who have served on our HR and staff well-being subcommittee over the past several weeks. They represent educators, paraprofessionals, and district leaders pre-K through 12. As an educator of 30 years, I know that teaching is incredibly rewarding and challenging work. I also know and firmly believe that staff well-being is critical to the well-being of students. We've heard this metaphor before, but I'm going to remind us of it. When we fly on an airplane, the flight attendant instructs us to put our oxygen mask on first before helping others. Why is this important for ensuring survival? Because if we run out of oxygen ourselves, we cannot help anyone else with their oxygen mask. This is an important metaphor for those of us in this room and outside this room, parents, doctors, nurses, caregivers, and educators who spend a great deal of time taking care of others. Caring for others depletes the caregiver. It is incumbent on us to ensure the well-being of our staff and students, every one of them. So over these past few weeks, we've talked about staff well-being in our schools and, as Meg mentioned, multi-tiered systems of support. And I chose this Viktor Frankl quote, "When we are no longer able to change a situation, we are challenged to change ourselves." Because I know that we can do, we can change ourselves with the help of one another. And during this time, this extraordinary time, we need to recognize and respond to the stressors that we face, and a few are listed here, from economic disruption to isolation, sense of loss of family and friends, school closure, and certainly uncertainty. Pictured here is the pyramid of the multi, of the tiered, I'm sorry, of the multi-tiered systems of support. And I'll go into, I'll highlight some of those in the following slides as they relate to staff support. So what you see here are staff support, student supports, and family supports. So Tier One is that universal, that base core support. Tier One ensures consistent, caring, two-way communication with and among all staff, including but not limited to the following. Wellness opportunities offered during and after the school day, during faculty meetings, small group meetings, and through informal check-ins with one another. Invitations for staff to regroup and pause during the school day and after the school day. Building liaisons who serve as staff support for those who seek a listening ear or confidant. So these are individuals in the building who volunteer, again, to be available to staff. They take it upon themselves to check in with staff, again, before, during, and after the school day on an informal basis. People will know who those folks are because we'll let them know who the building liaisons are across our nine schools. As well as district-wide opportunities offered through the Mindfulness Director Initiative. So that's the basic, base, universal core supports. Thanks, Brian. As we move along to Tier Two, this is where we're increasing that support. It's also referred to as supplemental or core plus more. And in this area, we're looking to design flexibly-designed care groups that provide opportunities to all staff for frequent check-ins with colleagues. So if you're a staff member at Patton School or Shrewsbury High School, what we're thinking of doing is creating, putting all staff members in these groups, whether you choose to or not, you're in a care group. Unlike the building liaisons, those are optional. Those are people in the building who are available, again, to anyone who would like to connect on a one-to-one basis. These care groups are small groups that will meet regularly, again, just to check in with one another. There'll be a facilitator, and those facilitators, we don't know who those people are right now, but we know we have a lot of many qualified people who can do that work, from teacher leaders, counselors, psychologists, building leaders, and as Meg mentioned, organizations including Bright will help us learn how to engage one another in that important work. Tier Three is intensive work for staff, intensive support. It's referred to as core plus more plus more. And in this tier, you can expect to find comprehensive care coordination with district supports, including our Employee Assistance Program, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, Bright and others. Also, under Tier Three, staff will be consistently encouraged to check in with their school and district care leaders, the facilitators of the care groups, as well as attend staff support groups and/or engage with telehealth-style therapeutic supports as warranted. So our goal is to identify and protect time, space and opportunities for every staff member in our district to promote and provide collective care. The four suggested action steps designed and created by the subcommittee include the following. Provide training and professional development in the following ways as identified by staff feedback that we've received over the past several weeks and months, including cultivating emotional resilience, strengthening adult social-emotional learning, developing trauma-informed practice and equity-related planning. Establish these safety care groups for all SPS staff. Identify building-based well-being liaisons to support staff on a daily basis, on a one-to-one basis. Offer well-being opportunities during and after the school day, which we did with some success this year. These opportunities include take-a-break areas for adults, just a quiet spot in the building, book clubs, fitness opportunities, other options that staff are looking for and are offering to lead and facilitate include cooking and art classes. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Malone, our executive director of HR.
Thank you, Dr. Lozot. So Dr. Lozot and I work together with the same subcommittee, but we did divide the work into things that might fall under staff well-being, employee morale, employee supports, and then things that you would consider more likely to be traditional human resources, which is where we get into the workforce planning. Obviously, we have anticipated leaves of absence in a hybrid model. It is assumed that employees will be able to report to their assigned school in order to teach and provide services for students. However, for a variety of reasons, some staff just might not be able to meet that assumption, and we need to plan in advance for that. There are a variety of leave options available, including childcare leave, which has been created at the federal level by the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act. Now, some of these leave options, including the childcare leave, will expire after 12 weeks or on December 31st, 2020. But if you have your own medical condition, a leave could potentially last longer. We are taking a personalized approach to working with employees, having individual conversations to understand what their need is, to work with them on providing documentation and to assist them in choosing the appropriate kind of leave that meets their situation if they are unable to come to school to work. We have many critical questions with workforce planning. The point of it is to match our human resources to the model of operation and to anticipate the needs in various scenarios. So part of what we had to think about and ensure was that we would have enough resources to meet the learning and health needs. This includes quickly replacing faculty and staff. There may be a situation such as somebody's spouse is a first responder. They've been exposed to COVID-19. They are placed on quarantine for 14 days and then their spouse would be a close contact who then also needs to be placed on leave. So we need to know that staff will be coming in and out based on the circumstances that are in place. We know we have an increased need for school nurses when employees and students are physically present in building, and so on and so forth. We need to make sure that we can flex through the various learning models the circumstances dictate. We'd start with a hybrid model, but we may need to go to a remote model. We may be able to get to some point of being in a fully in-person model, and we need to be able to flex through all of those things in planning. And it's not just a one-year plan. It's also, we need to be appropriately positioned at the end of the 2021 school year just after the opening of the new Beal Elementary School. So we really have to look at it as a two-year plan. So it starts with assessing our current staff capacity. We did go through some exercises you can see there on the screen. We have a list of current staff who have requested to teach remotely that was generated by them, saying, "Look, I am concerned. I believe I need to teach remotely or take a leave of absence." I did send out on behalf of our subcommittee a list of frequently asked questions regarding leaves that stimulated a great deal of the response from staff, saying, "I think this might apply to me." The ability to accommodate requests to teach virtually, that's going to be dependent on the need. So that's going to be based on parent preferences and further analysis of other instruction delivery models. So there's a lot of work still to do in terms of assessing where we need to go. The parent choices will be very important to that. But we can't wait till we have all the facts. So we have to move into the idea of anticipatory hiring. And so we have posted for long and short-term special educators at all levels, key ABA technician and child-specific aides to support individualized education plans. You know, we are in a competitive environment to get staff into our school system. At this time, we have had about 40 applicants to both the elementary and the middle level each, and about 70 applicants to high school positions, as well as some individual leaves we're already aware of, where we have our typical searches going on to fulfill those. We have about a dozen special educator applicant packets and about a dozen day-to-day substitute educators. And some of the long-term substitute educators are also interested in day-to-day substituting. So we are deeply embarked in reviewing those application packets and looking to see if we can bring some of those folks in proactively so we can have a seamless staffing operation. It's important to talk about the opening of Beal. The new Beal facility is still opening for the 21-22 school year. And it's so important to us to retain our valuable faculty and staff. We're going to need them beyond the challenges of this school year. And so one advantage of having long-term substitutes hired in advance is that then we'll have tried and tested candidates for potential openings next year, who will work as substitutes this year. And with that, I am going to turn it back to Dr. Sawyer, who is going to talk about this key information for families.
My job is to wrap up. I really appreciate everybody's patience. Obviously, this is a lot of information, trying to distill an 89-page document into something understandable. But obviously, we know from the questions that have come in, we wanted to try to cover a variety of these issues that are of importance to our families and our staff. I will just emphasize again, for those who may have tuned in after we began, that we are going to be asking families to make an initial choice of the hybrid program versus the standalone full-remote program for their child by Friday, August 14th. They'll do that through the Parents Power School portal. And we'll send an email out early next week with instructions how to do that. We'll be holding three informational webinars next week, and we'll send that information out by email with a link as well. And I just want to conclude by saying a couple of quick things. First off, I'm sure many of you watched the streaming of the Broadway musical Hamilton when it came out back in early July. And I know one of the songs in the musical that I keep hearing my daughters play is, it's called "Nonstop", about Hamilton's just ongoing work because of his passion for what he was doing. This leadership team has been working nonstop for months now. I could not be more grateful or proud of the work that these leaders are doing. And I think you saw the quality and the quantity of the work that they're producing in order to try to help us reopen schools safely for students and staff in the fall. So I want to thank them for their efforts. And I also want to conclude by saying, certainly, I'm an educator, and I do see the benefits of bringing our students back to school in a limited in-person option, which I think is very important to do if we're able to do that safely. There are a lot of reasons why it's important for students, the way they benefit from being in school and connected to their adults on a weekly basis, who can support them. It's also important for families. I'm a parent as well. I have two children who will be in the school district this coming year. I'm fortunate that they're older, in upper-middle school and high school. I know that this situation poses very real, very difficult situations for parents with regard to childcare. We're trying to create a plan that provides some level of predictability, but we know depending on a parent's job, it may be very difficult for them to swing the childcare situation, and that's something that we know unfortunately will impact many of our families. At the same time, I also know as a parent that for my own children, I want to be sure that their development is addressed and that they get the benefits of being able to interact, hopefully in a limited basis in person, with our educators. And finally, again, we are going to be monitoring the circumstances. If they change in the wrong direction, this plan may very well change to an all-remote plan for everyone. We don't know what that's going to look like. Obviously, if we move in that direction, we'll let people know directly. We have, as Ms. Clutter mentioned, a beefed-up approach based on what the state is requiring of us and what we need to do if we have to go in that mode. But as of now, this is the plan that we are presenting to you based on the public health data as it stands, and would ask the committee to support that with a vote to approve it this evening and to allow us to submit it to the department by the August 10th deadline. And with that, again, appreciate your patience and would be happy to answer any questions and hear any comments the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and staff. And before I turn it over to the committee, I also want to publicly thank Dr. Sawyer and all of the district leadership staff and all the staff who helped on this reopening plan and really recognized the amount of time and effort that has gone into this. This is my 13th year on the committee. I've never seen so much work done by this group in this district in such a short amount of time. They have put in countless hours way beyond their normal workdays to get this done in a caring and considerate manner for everybody involved. So huge thank you. I know all districts across the state, country are dealing with this, but we are so extremely fortunate to have this type of leadership team and the staff that we do, who are thinking about safety and for staff, students, families, but also these educational services that our students really deserve. So thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Turn it over to the committee for questions, comments. Lindsay, go ahead.
I think I certainly echo the sentiments and thank all of you for all the incredible amount of work. I really appreciate the analogy, Ms. Clutter, of the puzzle and having the outlines done. But I actually think of it, I was recently on vacation, had the opportunity for my first time ever to do a circular jigsaw puzzle. So even when you get the outside, you start to make the middle, and you don't quite know how it fits. And so it's even more complex because we don't even know where our corners are, right? And I have, if I can, a question and then a comment about the overall plan. My question, and if it's too far in the middle and we haven't figured it out, I can accept that. But for parents who are trying to get here, I think are really targeted towards those high need and potentially Cohort A students. And so I'm not sure who the right person might be to take this. But I'm particularly thinking about parents who are trying to think about the option of all-remote learning for their young person and are thinking about private providers, providing more support and what that might look like. That's sort of one question about how are IEP services delivered appropriately? And how do we, as a district, sort of manage and support that? And as sort of the flip side of that is, one of the definitions of more higher need are young people and families who maybe weren't as able to engage with remote learning, and that puts them on our radar for us, and we get concerned about them. But of course, those parents could also opt to go all-remote. And so if they didn't engage previously and they potentially might opt for something that causes us to have some anxiety, I'm wondering what we're thinking about, how we might go about doing even some targeted interventions and suggest that Cohort A option might be better for you than a Cohort D for your young person? Or have you gotten that deep into the weeds when you think about those high-need young people?
I can start with the response to that. You know, the beginning, you know, at this point, the thing that we have to try to figure out and balance is how many seats we can fill to maintain the six-foot social distancing. So we're starting with just, you know, our highest-need students in terms of our most complex special education students who receive special education services and our very beginner English language learners. The other categories, and people will see that in the report that the state put out that should be considered for potential, you know, every or more in-person instruction as available, include some of the groups that you just mentioned, Ms. Heffernan. And I think what we will need to do is, you know, see, put that initial Cohort A together, see what those numbers are, see what the numbers are of what parents are choosing for full-remote, and then see what kind of seats we have. And if we have enough seats to be able to have the alternating cohorts, depending on the number of students who are opting for full-remote Cohort D, we might be able to open up Cohort A to more students, to have more in-person. And those certainly would be some of the characteristics we'd be looking at if we were going to be able to expand that. But at this point, we think we have to just start with that most-high-need group and then see if we have the room to expand it further from there.
So while we think about them as sort of higher needs, they're not high needs as to lay down on their IEP services. So for parents who are at home wondering, I think it maybe goes back to, maybe it's worth just reiterating that for parents who are thinking, "It's my child in that group." And I think there was one point in time you mentioned, it's delaying on their IEP as a, what was it called again?
The placement page.
Placement page, thank you.
So on the placement page, it actually designates whether a student is high need.
So that's what parents are.
That is actually equated from the service delivery grid, and that would say 75% outside of the classroom would be considered our highest needs in the district right now.
Thank you for the clarity. I read the whole report, and I was a little confused by that. So I'm sure some at home probably are as well. I'm sure be feeling lots of questions. When I think about this overall plan, there are so many people sort of to thank and acknowledge that many, many people on your reopening committees, beyond just the people in this room, our partnership with the public health departments in Worcester. But I even think of some of the unsung heroes we don't think about a lot within the town in terms of our public facilities. Many of the questions we got were about issues around the buildings and ventilation. And I think what they're offering to do in terms of building support and even reviews of their entire system go sort of above and beyond what's being asked of us right now and is worth, really important for transparency for parents and staff about what we're trying to do as an entire community in order to bring children back. It's not just us in this room, that there are many more trying to support our children and our young people. And then I also think about some of the emails we've received over the last couple of weeks as a committee, not even to the reopening email, but just to the school committee. And they run the entire gamut, from parents who absolutely want all-remote as the way we should go, to those who want all-in-person and sort of risks put aside that that is important to many parents who were concerned, as some of our caller was today, about sort of anxiety for young people or very specific questions about how we would manage the hybrid. So. questions about how we would manage the hybrid. So, we sort of know even as a district, as we pick a path forward, I think it's not to dismiss any of those concerns. It's trying to figure out how to balance all of them, that those are all very legitimate and that that's the middle of the puzzle. We kind of can't figure out, right? And so, I, I am in support of, of the plan that's, that's put forward, even knowing there's a lot more for us to figure out over, over the next, I think, five and a half weeks or so we have, or six weeks to get, to get to young people being actually back in our, in our buildings again. I think what we've done is balance the needs to educate our children, the proper development that young people have and needing to be with other young people as best as, as best as we can and ensuring really healthy environments for everybody who is in our buildings. And so, I would just want to let all of you know how appreciative I am of, of the work that your team, Dr. Sawyer, has done and the many other people that have contributed to make this what I think will be a unique and a little bizarre, but, but important restart of, of some sense of normalcy for, for the, the kids of Shrewsbury. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else? Jason?
If you would indulge me, I have a couple of questions before I make comments. To start off with something that I know that has been a topic in, in previous school committee meetings, but I'm wondering if for the benefit of folks who are watching at home, if Ms. Friedman could expand upon our nurse staffing. I know that we do have a plan in place to expand nurse staffing. Obviously, the, the presentation you made earlier, there's going to be a lot of demands on our school nurses. And in addition to their very important role in screening, I would imagine there's going to be a lot of sensitivity around what may or may not be symptoms and probably a lot of visits to the nurse's office. So I'm wondering if maybe you could just touch a little bit on the effort we have underway to beef up nursing staffing?
Sure. So we have, as Ms. Malone mentioned, we have long-term subpositions posted. So for nursing, we have two, two full-time long-term subpositions who would, those positions would, are considered float nurses. So they would go to wherever they are needed in the district. Whether I have staff out, obviously, nurses get sick and are going to have to abide by the if you're sick, stay home rule. So we'll need coverage for nurses who are out because they are ill. And we are also anticipating that, exactly what you said, that our offices may be more busy. And I think there's going to be a lot, especially in the beginning, of just explaining the, to families, the need to send children home for things that we typically wouldn't. So I think that there's, the communication is going to be time-consuming. So having that extra support for our nurse's offices is going to be key to kind of a smooth transition for everybody involved.
Thank you. Another question for, for Ms. Malone with regard to our staff. And I know that there's obviously been, in addition to family and community anxiety, there's been a lot of staff anxiety. And first of all, I want to thank you for taking the time to engage with so many of our staff members on a one-on-one basis to try to address what I'm sure are complicated and difficult questions. One of the items that's, remains up in the air, and I just want to confirm my understanding, because I know there have been a lot of staff questions about the ability to potentially teach remotely. If you could confirm my understanding, it is our, our best intention to try to connect teachers who wish it with the opportunity to teach remotely. But why that is still unsettled is because we have to match the staffing resources we have with the potential need. So obviously, that would depend on how many students choose to engage with cohort D. That would depend on whether or not we need to engage an outside placement. It would also depend on matching student need with the licensure and experience of a teacher. So, do I have that, that correct? Is that, is that why that particular component remains unsettled at this point?
Yes, that was very well said.
Excellent. I just, I just, I, I wanted to touch on that in particular because I know that's something we're hearing a lot about, and I do appreciate that the effort is being made. My, my thoughts on the, on the proposal before us tonight, you know, this is one of those moments, I think, in leadership where there are no easy answers. In a time like that, we always turn to what our values are, what our moral beliefs are. And this is also one of those cases where the answers to those questions don't point clearly or evenly to logistical answers. We value safety above all. And of course, in an ideal world, if there were any risk at all, we would, we would pull everyone away from the situation, and that would be that. We also know that we have a responsibility to educate our students and to connect with our students. We know that there are students whose needs are really not being met in a remote setting. And so, we have to balance that. It's an uncomfortable moment, but I have personally been inspired to see our district's leadership team, our principals, and all of the staff at every level that has engaged with all of these committees really rise to, to meet the challenge. As I said last week, we are unfortunately in this situation as a result of what I consider to be a national failure to address a national pandemic, the consequence of which has crashed upon our shores. But here we are, and we still have a responsibility to educate our students. I have read this plan in detail. Obviously, we had our presentation last week. I have been reading and reflecting on all of the feedback we've received from the community, which I do appreciate because it has been helpful. And through all that reflecting and reading and thinking and listening, and what I feel about the plan before us is that it strikes the best possible balance. It does give those families who wish it and who feel that they need it and who feel that it's in their best interest, the option to remain in remote learning. But I do not feel that a fully-remote or remote-only option is in our best interest. I think that there is a temptation to conclude that fully-remote-only is safe or harmless. And though it is for some, I don't believe that to be the case for everyone. We have kids who don't have resources at home that we know can help those kids engage with remote learning. We have parents who, for a variety of reasons, including economic, are not able to help their children engage with remote learning despite the best efforts of teachers and staff. And though it is a small number, thank God, we have students who struggle with abuse and neglect and unmet family emotional needs at home, who are often, it is often a school setting where those get noticed and dealt with. And we need to keep those kids in mind. This approach protects those families who feel that they cannot send their kid to a school building, and it creates an opportunity for those students who must be in a school building to have that engagement, however limited it might be. So in spite of all of these challenges, I, I find myself supportive of the plan in front of us. You know, I, I understand that there are remaining questions, and that is something we, we also hear consistently in the feedback. There are unanswered questions. There are remaining questions. There are still answers to be, to be had. And the reality of the situation is, no one has all the answers. The reality of the situation is a remote-only-for-everyone plan doesn't answer all of the questions either. And so, what I arrive at is knowing that there are going to be questions. There are going to be developments. There are going to be changes in what is clearly a very fluid situation. The question for me is, with the plan in front of us, do I trust this leadership team that we have around us to handle those challenges as they come up in the manner that is what is in the best interest of our students? And I do trust this leadership team. And so, for that reason, I am supportive of this proposal.
Thank you, Jason. John?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank everybody involved for putting together such a thorough plan to vet, you know, returning to school safely for, for students, educators, and staff. It's challenging enough to plan for the opening of a normal school year, and then you, you factor in what COVID has added, another layer of complexity to, you know, what are, what is already a challenging time. I also like to say, I do appreciate Dr. LaZott and Ms. Malone's review of staff well-being, NHR, resources that are available to our staff. As you said, Dr. LaZott, certainly, staff is critical to the well-being and success of our students. And I think it's important, you know, for our educators and staff that are watching tonight to review Section thirteen of the reopening plan. I think there's a lot of really good resources there for you to review and, and understand what's available to you, you know. So we understand, you know, certainly, this new normal presents its own challenges. Definitely support you. If you don't mind, I have a question first before I have additional comments, more around operations, and maybe Mr. Collins can help me with this one. I know we've had some comments and concerns with regards to air circulation and ventilation. And I know in this report, I think around page seventy-eight of eighty-nine, it does reference that there's going to be a third-party evaluation of the HVAC systems to answer any, you know, safety concerns. I guess my question is, is there like a, a target timeline for that report? I know it's, it's still out to bid with the public buildings. But I'm just curious if, if there's like a kind of a target date in mind. And then also, just as a follow-up to that, is this a report we have had in the past, and what, what should we expect to see from that?
Sure. So I think, you know, the, the target date, like every other school district, is as soon as possible, you know, preferably before reopening. And it is, again, it's not a requirement, it's not a necessity. It's more of a third-party independent reassurance. And also, you know, an opportunity to see if there are some unidentified gaps where we can maybe make some improvements or other suggestions about how to make our systems run better. You know, all of our building systems are, you know, maybe unlike some other Massachusetts school districts or other school districts in other states, you know, our, our building systems are well-managed and already regularly receive outside contract services with respect to their management. Routine preventive maintenance schedules are adhered to, and corrective maintenance, of course, is done when, when it's needed. The vast majority of our systems are managed by electronic, computerized building management control systems. And in fact, just before this meeting, because the air was getting a little stifling, I texted the Public Facilities Division manager, and he remotely turned on the AC here for this particular room. It's going to stop in about seven minutes. I told him until nine-thirty. So that's the, you know, the kind of capacity.
To move the question.
That, you know, that we have. And, you know, so the report is as soon as possible. I think what we can expect, again, is an engineering, you know, kind of a global study looking at the types of equipment that are on hand and how well that they are operating, and again, what improvements we might be able to take. And I do not want to also, at the same time, dismiss in any way, you know, that what was mentioned earlier from Mr. Chalmers, that we do have an aged facility, Beale School, that we're going to have to take a closer look at to see what other things can be done to provide the best air quality we can for this upcoming school year. So that is, and he is trying to separately get another contractor in there to also give us ideas as soon as possible. We're, you know, we're into the summer and fall months where we can clearly open windows and, and move air freely, but then we're going to hit the heating season. It's going to be a little bit different story. So we're looking for also ideas about how to manage that school as well. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Definitely. Thank you very much. I would like to just add some additional comments, if I might. So, you know, I, I understand the fear and anxiety from, from all perspectives, whether it be, you know, as a parent, certainly, of an incoming freshman to Shrewsbury High School, from students and families and, and teachers, especially, you know, as was mentioned at the beginning of your presentation regarding watching the news and following social media and really getting preoccupied with what's happening in the states around us and south and west of us. It is hard to watch, I will admit. And it's been, it's kind of been a long, five months, I feel like it's been five years. So, you know, the back-to-school discussions in many states have been alarming. You know, when I look at Florida, you know, the positivity rate of seventeen-point-eight percent, and they're still trying to determine if face masks are a good idea, you know. And that's, that's alarming, and they're talking about back-to-school, you know, all-in, right? You know, and you look at, you know, even, even on social media, what was going viral this week were the crowded halls of a high school in Georgia, right? And, you know, positivity rate there is twelve-point-eight percent, right? So that, it's alarming to see. It, as a parent, it puts me on edge. And if I lived in any of those states or any other state other than Massachusetts, I might have a different opinion about the approach. But, I mean, over the last five months, all I've, I've been able to do is focus on, you know, what's happening around me, what's happening within the borders of my state, and most importantly, what's happening in my town, you know. And I, and I do follow the data quite religiously. I get my daily counts of, of new cases. And I know that, you know, Massachusetts positivity rate is about two percent, and Shrewsbury about one-point-two-three percent, you know. So I, I look at this plan and the level of detail and the, and the safety precautions that are taken in a, in a state that is in a much better situation than the majority. And I, I do feel that the data, you know, continues to, to look favorable for us in Shrewsbury. I do support this plan. I believe it takes all necessary safety precautions, and I think it's important to exercise patience and flexibility, as was mentioned before. I think this is a, you know, an evolving situation. Certainly, this will be an evolving model. And it could be that, you know, remote learning is, is the safety valve if, if things get, or put us at more risk. So, you know, again, I, I support the plan. I appreciate all the work that's been put into this eighty-nine-page plan. I do encourage the public to, to read through it. And yeah, I appreciate, appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Dale?
So I'll try to finish before the air conditioner goes off. I agree with what everyone here has said. I view this as the plan for now. And I think it offers flexibility. It acknowledges the fact that there are different groups. It acknowledges the fact that there are parents who have different values and different fear levels. And so, it can accommodate people who may think about this differently. And certainly, one thing that I learned in, in practicing for forty years was I can explain the exact same risk to two different people, and they will make very different decisions. And they will all think that everyone thinks the way they do. So the ability to be able to accommodate this, I think, is very important. I, I also feel that the idea that this plan is going to evolve and that we're going to see how we do and basically modify it with a goal towards eventually getting students all back in class all the time, which is, is the most desirable, is, is very favorable. And I, I don't have a lot of fear of the unknown or the like. I think we're in a much better place now than we were five months ago. I think we've had this, this surge that occurred. We've seen how it's managed. It was very well-managed in Worcester County. And we understand how many have turned positive. We get a sense as to how many of the positives get very sick. We know that it's, it's basically ninety-nine out of a hundred people in Shrewsbury have not gotten this infection throughout the surge. We know that there are only about fifteen children who have gotten a positive test in Shrewsbury in all of these months. We know that essentially, there have been no admissions to the UMass Hospital Children's Unit for students who have been very sick. So we've gotten a picture of what is happening. We also know that people in healthcare and police and fire have continued to work, and even the rate of positivity within the healthcare setting is barely higher, or barely different, I should say, than it is the community at large. The number of positives in the UMass system is barely different than their risk being in the community at large. So what they're doing to protect themselves seems to be working. The people in retail are back working. The people in services are back working. And so, I think there's a lot of reassurance for us to be gained by that. By the same token, the fact that all of these people are back working is going to make it considerably more difficult for those families to manage even a couple days a week on the hybrid plan. And, and we have to keep an eye on that and to see what, what the consequences of that are. But I think we're, we're dealing with uncertainty in an exemplary way. I think I, I take some comfort in the experience that has unfolded over this period of time. And even though there's a lot of attention being paid to these outbreaks that have been occurring, virtually all of them have been in instances which is rather flagrant violation of the rules of distancing and wearing masks. They're, they're, they're not a mystery. And, and so, I think that we're, we're handling this well. I look forward to see how it evolves. I support it.
Thank you, Dale. And not to belabor the point, but I think, you know, since March, we've all been living with fear and anxiety and stress about health and safety. But students have been living with that as well, and they have been unable to access school as they normally would. And that creates concerns for their educational well-being and social, emotional, and mental health. So, I mean, there's lots of risk. And I think we can all view risk differently when it comes to reopening school. But I think this recommended plan as a hybrid model takes into consideration that balanced risk to staff and students while providing educational services to students. That's what we need to do as a school system. We have to provide our students with the best education possible. And I also understand and appreciate families' concerns about returning to school and the potential risks involved in doing so. But I've reviewed this recommendation carefully. But I've reviewed this recommendation carefully. I've read every hyperlink. And I too am in favor of the proposed hybrid model to reopen schools. It was not done in a vacuum, and that's our, our district includes everybody in decision-making. All levels, all opinions, everything is considered because that's how we make decisions. It's not top-down. It includes everyone. And I too, as Jason said, I have the utmost trust in district leadership and staff that they'll carefully continue to monitor the situation. And if, and we have to be flexible and open to possible change if needs change and things have to be reconsidered. This reopening of the school year is definitely going to be very challenging. Last time we sat in this room, five months ago, I don't think any one of us would have ever imagined we'd be doing this in five months. So I think we need to continually work together as a community. And we have to support our staff and our students so that we continue to provide educational services in whatever form it takes. But that's the goal of what we do as a school committee and as a district. So I fully support the hybrid model.
Anything further, Dr. Soria?
Just thank you very much for the comments and the support. And, you know, obviously, we'll continue to move forward, looking at things carefully and being flexible and adaptable as we need to be with the safety and health of everyone foremost in our minds.
Great, thank you. Okay. May I have a motion that the school committee vote to approve the superintendent's recommended school reopening plan for the 2020-2021 school year as presented and authorize its submission to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education?
So moved.
Second.
Move second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. Okay, next on the agenda, we need to look at the revised calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. We approved the original calendar back on February 5th. And new information from DESI was released recently regarding delaying the start of school for students by 10 days to enable thorough training and orientation for staff in light of the COVID pandemic and planning for reopening of school in the fall. Dr. Soria will present a revised school calendar for us to approve and vote on if it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And the information is the same as I went over in the reopening plan that you just approved. There is a document there in your packet that shows the year with the revised calendar, with the staff starting on August 31st, first day for students being Tuesday, September 15th, shifting the professional development date to January 15th, with the last day of school being June 16th. So, and eliminating the early release days that were in the previous iteration due to the differences in the schedule. So this is essentially just affirming the calendar. And we'll get that posted and sent out to families with the other information that'll be coming out as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments on the revised calendar? Seeing none? Okay. May I have a motion that the committee vote to approve the revised Shrewsbury Public Schools 2020-2021 school year calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Move and second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Collins will provide an update for the revised fiscal year 2021 school department budget recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ritz. I have just a few slides this evening and want to hit a few topics. First is the fiscal '21 fiscal reality and our strategy for this school year. State aid update. What is our current status with respect to budget? What's on the near-term or short-term horizon? And then ending with a recommended vote for a new increased bottom-line school budget recommendation to the annual town meeting members, which will be this Saturday. In terms of our fiscal reality, fiscal '21, as we know, will remain to be a dynamic year financially with numerous changes on our status based upon a number of variables. Certainly, the educational modality will impact both our cost structure and our fee and tuition revenues. And the cost to remote, the remote learners or Cohort D is dependent upon the enrollment and, of course, the cost and method of providing those services. So again, another question mark. Certainly, school closures could reduce some operating costs, potentially some transportation, some custodial supplies, general supplies, day-to-day substitutes, things like that, which we saw in fiscal '20. But closures can also create new types of costs for other types of services like compensatory services for special education and the like. So again, it's going to be dynamic. That's our reality. In terms of, you know, the strategy, certainly, we're going to leverage federal stimulus funds to the fullest extent, knowing that those funds that we've received thus far are both use-restricted, that they can only be used for COVID-related direct costs impacts, and they are time-restricted, that those funds right now are only available to us up through December 30th, 2020. And then we have to bear the ongoing costs after that locally. Our strategy also needs to include more frequent budget status updates and monitoring, which will be a more intensive and ongoing effort as opposed to prior years. And that certainly mid-year reductions, as a result of all this uncertainty, mid-year reductions may be required. And that their impact of making some of those reductions really kind of mitigates as you get further in the fiscal year, especially as it relates to staff. So, you know, if we wait till, you know, next March to make some sort of staff reductions, of course, their payroll costs are only for, you know, the remaining four months or so of the fiscal year. So you would have to reduce a greater number of staff in order to have the same financial impact you're trying to achieve. So that's just something to keep in mind or bear in mind as we work to strategize through this upcoming fiscal year. In terms of a state aid update, I just wanted to lay this out because, of course, this is a good news story with respect to state aid. And on the far-left column, and I know it's probably hard for some of our viewers potentially, unless this is like direct-screened home. But these, all of these figures are really figures developed by our town manager, Kevin Mizikar, who has responsibility for forecasting overall general fund receipts, which state education aid is included in that category, as well as unrestricted general government aid. But in terms of last fiscal year, the total amount that the town received for both of those categories was just over $23 million. So it's a significant amount of aid. When he prepared the budget in January, pre-COVID, for the upcoming fiscal year, or the one that we're in now, fiscal '21, he had estimated that those state aid categories would be increased to just over $23.3 million. And that would be kind of a normal cost increase that one would expect from one year to the next in Shrewsbury. That was in January. Then in the middle column, of course, is April. And he had to revise his estimate based upon all of the information that we had and were receiving from the state about 10% to 15% revenue reduction statewide and how it might impact education aid, unrestricted general aid. And they were preparing all the municipalities for reductions. And so Mr. Mizikar then reduced his estimate from $23.3 million down to $21.8 million in terms of what we might expect for this year. So that was a decrease of 1.5 million or 6.4%. Flash forward to July 30th, 2020, one week ago, just seven days ago, a tentative agreement was struck by the Mass State Legislature. And our representative Hannah Kane was able to email us quickly with that information to help us be nimble in preparations for the upcoming annual town meeting. And that information and that tentative agreement, basically, the state legislature said, "Look, let's try to hold aid to all of our cities and towns at about the same level that they got last fiscal year, fiscal '20." So you can see that the updated state aid figures are, again, just over $23,62,267. So as a result of that, the difference between that number in the revised is an increase of $1.23 million, of which, in our discussions with the town manager, including several school committee members who've been meeting regularly, also with some Board of Selectmen members, is that of that amount, the school allocation is $915,000, and then the balance $315,000 to other municipal departments. So this is, again, a good news story on the state aid. And I just wanted to trace that through for folks and kind of put that on the record with those timestamps to show the evolution of how the changes in state aid. So the next slide, where does that leave us with our budget? Well, on July 22nd, the school committee voted to support a budget of just over $67 million for fiscal '21. That was in accordance with the town manager's recommendation. We knew we took this balanced risk approach, meaning that at that level, we know that that wasn't likely to cover all of our costs or all of our revenue losses and that there was still a remaining gap of approximately $2 million headed into fiscal '21. But we were thinking that of the potential of additional state aid coming forward, potential cost mitigation with our labor unions, and also the potential for additional federal stimulus funding, which is being prepared and talked about now as, I think it's Federal Stimulus Package Number Four is what they're calling it. We know that the state aid numbers that I just gave you on the blue side here provide for an additional $915,000 and shrink that projected gap, again, just by just under $1 million. So we still are facing, in this balanced risk approach, and still have a potential $1.1 million gap. And of course, the two events that haven't occurred, of the three that I mentioned before, are the potentiality of cost mitigation from our labor unions and then federal stimulus aid and what those monies can be used for, for federal stimulus. So while it's a good news story, there is still a gap existing. And I do want to make mention of what is often refrained from various groups about this notion of they always find the money. And what does happen every year is we always have a balanced budget because we're required to. But we don't always find the money to make the situation good. And all you need to do is look or ask one of those 29.6 FTE positions that were cut as part of the fiscal '21 budget plan already and not coming forward in fiscal '21, and ask them if they found the money, because we didn't. And so, and we are still facing a $1 million gap. So that's what our status is. It's a generally good news story. It's going in a positive direction, but we still are facing this gap. And on the last slide, I want to just talk about the short-term horizon, some things that we'll talk about more, I'm sure, in the coming weeks, is, again, planning for this decreased revenue for full-day kindergarten. The preschool program may have a similar type of reduction, more than I've projected originally. I think I'm going to need to update those revenue decreases at an upcoming forecast. And then also the potential negative impact on athletic fee revenue. If the fall season were to still occur and we still pay coaching stipends, but if there's some sort of shortened season or decreased participation, that could also have a negative effect on our financial situation overall. So those are some of the more near-term things that I'll be reporting to the school committee in the coming weeks. And then finally, again, is the recommended vote to vote a bottom-line budget of $67,995,283 for the annual town meeting to be voted upon on August 8th. And that is your update. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments on this? Jason?
Just thank you for your work, and I appreciate your emphasis on the fact that the situation remains unresolved. And in particular, your point about found money and how that does not reflect the reality of the situation. The cuts that have to get made to address situations like this, absence of additional source of revenue, are very real. Their people's jobs and their services were able to provide or not provide to students. So thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone else?
And thank you, Mr. Collins. I too appreciate the fact you talk about a balanced budget and how we get to that. Every year, we start in January and we plot along. And this year was even more complicated. And thank you for all the work you've been doing in every different piece that you've had to add quickly so that it's very transparent to the public what's happening with our budget right now. And I too echo what Jason said, you know, this is where we sit today. But as we move into this budget cycle, it's a little different. We're not sure where we're going with maybe less costs. But then I think we're going to be having, you know, potential reduced revenues, which are going to affect the budget. And we're going to just continually have to monitor it monthly, day-of-the-day, and see what happens. So thank you for everything you've been doing.
You're welcome.
Anything further, Dr. Soria?
Breath, let me thank Mr. Collins again. And, you know, he's done an extraordinary amount of work throughout this whole process and more forecasting and updates than ever before under the circumstances. In addition to the transparency of providing these frequent updates and updating the community every time that we've had any kind of significant change, it's also transparency for our staff, which I think is also important. I think that it also, you know, the school committee's willingness to go into town meeting with a budget where there still is an estimated gap in order to try to preserve people's jobs, I think, is about the strongest signal that can be sent about how the school committee, and certainly on the recommendation of the administration, values our employees. And it's something that, you know, that balanced risk is one that's appropriate to take. It is our hope we'll be able to mitigate this and not have to do any cuts during the school year. But again, you know, making sure, I think there are some organizations or school districts that might take the approach of, well, let's sit on this information for a little while. Let's see how it further develops. And I think rightfully, we've advocated for sharing the information publicly as it develops virtually in real time, since we've been meeting virtually every week since the pandemic began. So again, I want to thank Mr. Collins. I appreciate the support of the school committee, and I do recommend this vote to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Soria. Nothing further? Okay. May I have a motion that the committee vote to recommend a school department fiscal year 2021 budget of $67,995,283 for approval at the annual town meeting to be held on August 8th, 2020?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our minutes from our school committee meetings held on July 22nd, 2020, and July 29th, 2020, and the school committee workshop minutes, which were from July 29th, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? There being none, these can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant-in-aid requirements, Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 222FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session? Second. Move and second in roll call vote is required. Dale?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself? Aye. Thank you and good night.